Okay, see none. We'll move to our one and only agenda item, and that is to the presentation of the preliminary fiscal year twenty twenty-two proposed budget.
Good evening. Good evening. Good. This is um, we had some really, really exciting meetings, but it's true that we lose all of your cases. It's been a long time. So we could have talked about a new budget in the year maybe tomorrow. So. See, I'm sorry. We want to just talk about other budget processes and timing. Um, this will be a new segment, which we do have a lot of district activities going on. And we both can get information on it. Well, we're getting even also like a budget, um, a COVID forum that we held not too long ago. So then on the screen, you can see the agenda for this evening. And after we go through the process and timeline, you'll have the opportunity to hear from each of our unit managers and our administrators. We run a lot of sites early budget process here at the Hudson Center. And it's a very decentralized model. Um, it's a very, um, collaborative, communicative model because we hold many, many meetings between the months of uh, December and then when we ultimately present for a budget or action, um, June. Um, also, this is a front-end budget until I want. We just can pose some challenges and also drive me for us to make as many assumptions as possible based on the best information that we have today. So with that, let's do a quick, quick review of Madoff's Year Base Budget. When you kick off the process, um, after the four months, what you see where your enrollment looks like, how it's tracking. And then I took out all of the various spreadsheets and financial calculations. And trying to get where we think we all that we'd be going is what we know about our families and what we know about, uh, with respect to other districts and other schools in our community. I take a look at enrollment projections and then I also take a look at where I think the formula allowance is going to go. Um, every year that comes to be carried, we hear that's a legislative year. Um, but then we set, typically set their budget for two years at a time. So in the second year, it's a little bit smoother to try to figure out that per part, per pupil formula allowance piece of the equation because everything we do, um, traces back to how much revenue we have. That's the framework that we use when it's like a building out of expense budget. So, um, the spread things that I gave a look at how those revenue projections for now, we bring it to finance committee. We also discussed that how we answer strategic planning sessions. And then we make our recommendation to be a demonstrated team and all of them are going to increase the create for keep expenditures the same based on that we want to live within our means of what that revenue stream is going to provide for us. Um, then also within Madoff's Year Base Meeting, you're going to hear from the administrators tonight, um, how they change their operational budget or not. Um, what they recommend with respect to personal in their area. And then you're also going to hear level two and three requests referenced. Um, level two request means that you're asking for the same level funding, but you may want to change how your programs deliver for various components of that program. Level three request, um, with respect to plant operations, kind of front service. Um, you're going to hear recommendations for additional revenue being tolerated here in those locations um, to support the future, um, processes of the district. Uh, every year too, um, so all of those things are figured out again between, um, December and March. And then usually sometime in March, every year we come together as an administrative team and also try to map out how we're going to put our capital values in play. And then we can work this six to seven hundred thousand dollars of our finance budget. And that's used on items like furniture, equipment, instructions, technology, subscriptions, curriculum options, depending on where we are in that cycle. All of our administrators will collect their class of their building of apartment. And then bring them to an administrative team meeting, we call it Capital Day. And usually we start the day with one to one and a half million requests. And it's our goal to figure out what the priorities are, what the replacement cycles look like, and then get to know everybody's areas so that we can prioritize through the entire system how to spend that year's six to seven hundred thousand dollars and then also. Is moving forward. So in, in all years, your budgets are plans and they can change. Um, and we saw that every day over the past eighteen months or so. Um, usually things change, but not quite, quite that rapidly. So again, hopefully we're entering a new budget, a new time and things may, may not progress quite as quickly. But we'll just have to find out. You have received two weeks this evening. You've received these slides which talk about, um, the background information of all the budget process, um, all the outcomes of all the administrative meetings that we help. Also, you received a link, um, we used to do a paper board budget book, but now it's electronic. So if you're looking for additional details or history behind anything you see in the slides, you can reference the other document, there's a landing page and then links to each administrator's budget worksheet, a description of why they're recommending what they're recommending, major changes relative to the prior year, and then what revenue supports their programs, if there's any, that they make a disturbance associated with that. So with that, um, we, you know, all of that process discussion brings us then to tonight. Where we would here, we do a discussion, we provide the background of the budget. And then there's a few weeks' time where you may review the information, you may ask questions. You can send follow-up questions, you can call, you can stop in and see Superintendent Derrick, I myself, or any of the administrators here tonight, if you'd like more information, the background beyond what's in the slide or the electronic book. So with that, um, I'm going to go over a little bit more information about the revenue side because that's really the base of how we build, um, all the various components of the budget. And then each administrator will speak to their section. Um, with respect to the first four presenters, feel free to ask questions because they do have activities in the district. Um, but then the rest of us, I, I believe, I have heard from anybody else that they will be exiting a little bit early and then we can have a lot more discussion in my log at the end as well. So with that, um, these slides are meant to stand along too, so we're not going to go through every single one, um, especially because this is kind of a review from some of the other meetings. So then going to, um, the slide about enrollment. Um, as you know, our births in the county have been down just like they have been in the region and across the nation, really, if you look on an average basis. And our enrollment in recent years has been much lower. Now, we're used to in our system a decade or more ago seeing class sizes two fifteen to two fifty, just depending on the year. Other with those smaller, on average, smaller family sizes in our community, we're seeing kindergarten classes entering the system anywhere from one seventy to maybe two oh five, somewhere in there. And our elementary schools are, and middle school now too, are tuned to those smaller cohorts. And we continue to expect to see that, um, you know, births rebounded a little bit in twenty eighteen, so we'll factor that into our twenty twenty-three revenue. So the budget next year, that will happen at this time. But that rebound in births didn't continue into twenty eighteen or twenty twenty based on data that we have from the county. So we'll see a little bit of increase, um, in twenty twenty-three, but then I will not factor that in um, unless something were to change economically speaking with respect to additional businesses opening or changes in school, other schools in the district or nearby districts as well. So the main drivers of revenue, of course, are the enrollment and the per pupil funding allowance. And on the next slide, I give a little bit more detail about what our enrollment has done going back to two thousand and seven and what I expect it to do next year and then for three additional years out. Um, the first grade column that you see out there, that's the twenty twenty-one revised budget number, twenty-six oh five in aggregate. That's the number we talked about during the April revised budget meeting. We are factoring in some stabilization in enrollment going into next year. And how we get to that point is we progress our students to the next grade level. We factor in a hundred and seventy-two to the kindergarteners. And then we say, we're assuming fifty to sixty-five percent of the students we lost, um, during the current year are going to return to us. And so when we take a look at how that flows through the models, you can see that in the orange column, twenty twenty-two, the revenue budget is then based on two thousand six hundred and twenty-three students.
Could you make the end of that chart a little later or not? No? Okay.
I can send it to you.
I, I have it on it.
Okay. Yeah. No, I know, I just wanted to have all the data available, but it's not always as easy to see. And if I were to go every grade level, um, by year and make it in a legible format, it would just take a lot of slides. And so I think this is just the best way to make sure I supply all the data. Um, and we can also distribute it in other ways if needed, um, with a scale. So just really as you can see, we lost a hundred and twenty-two students from twenty eleven to twenty twenty. Um, what that means for the revenue budget is one point two million. And so again, we're factoring in a little bit of stabilization, um, based on a lot of family calls that we've completed. Um, and we will see in the fall, end of the summer, of course, we'll be tracking it. But then in the fall, when there are these people who want a schooler that we go and see what sort of student enrollments we have in each grade level in the district and then provide recommendations on how we can revise a budget from that point. Now, the other major driver, um, as I mentioned, is the formula allowance. Um, current year said that six thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. I did that factor in our percentage increase to six thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Um, we do know that the House Senate Governor settled on five hundred and twenty-five million dollars in spending, which is, which is their news. Um, what we don't know yet is how much of that goes onto the formula and then is it a formula control versus how much is going to go into chemicals or specialized ingredients, those sorts of things. We'll continue to watch you on information. And then once we get our information, I can update things and hopefully that's. But we're doing work, but we'll just have to, have to wait and see how that goes. Um, this is a really important opportunity to thank our community for their support because whole percent of our overall budget, um, is comprised of local money revenue. Um, we couldn't do all the things that we do with our state revenue ball because that hasn't kept up with the pace of inflation. Had kept up with the pace of inflation, we'd be looking at, um, let's see, six hundred and fifty-nine more dollars per student per year. That's one point seven million per year. So with that, I just, I don't have a slide specific to that revenue component, but we don't want to overlook how important that is to our overall budget. So I just want to make sure so that'll do as well. So then with respect to that, portal allowance not keeping up with the pace of inflation, the student enrollment decline. Um, we've undergone some reductions in recent years, two million dollars to try to make sure that we land in a place where revenues are matching expenses on an annual basis. And when I run all of the information about revenue projections, the expense projections, the big picture bottom line is that if we don't factor in any reductions, if we don't factor in stimulus money, we're overspending in our own place in no year. So that's why this evening you'll hear about staffing to enrollment and you'll hear about the very important role that stimulus funds are going to play as a part of our budget for next year. Similar to how important they were for stat mapping, um, the one point five million revenue that we were missing due to the loss of enrollment this year. So I do recommend that being forward with a break-even budget for the current school year, next school year, um, subsequent years, it will, um, lend its all well to our financial stability and student achievement in, in the long term. So then with respect to the projected expenses on an aggregate basis for the general fund, thirty-five point seven million, once we go through all of the calculations, that's a total amount. And there's very little change in how we spend money from year-to-year, um, basis. The majority is spent on salaries, benefits, and purchase services that you can see in the chart, um, on the slide. So then again, just to recap the important assumptions that flow through the budget. Um, regarding one seventy-two, um, we did have a lot of processing to be placed by our student reporting specialist on Friday. And she was able to provide an update that we have a hundred and sixteen kindergarteners enrolled, which has been tracking in line with twenty nineteen. So at the same point in time during that year, that non-COVID year, that's how many students we have registered. So if that's an indicator about how, it's our only indicator at this point in time about how that class, um, leveling look, that grade leveling look, um, it gives us a little bit of insight into, uh, that cohort size. And so then I just listed out the other assumptions that we've already discussed, but they're good for reference. Um, one that I hadn't mentioned already on the next slide is regarding the TRA. I just wanted to remind you that with respect to the state pension plan, um, Brandon, summon your FASIN to increase the employer, the district contribution of employer, um, their share of the TRA costs are going up by point one percent each year. To us, that's approximately thirty-five thousand dollars a year, but then we generate saving top setback. But that is another component that is changing within the budget. And then of course, as we have approval statuses provided by MBE about our stimulus budgets, so that's our two and three, we'll factor that in. And then the salary projections, um, if you remember from the pie chart, they're almost eighty percent of our overall expenses, but right now we have several labor contracts that are unsettled. And so when one of those settles, then we will update the, the budget to reflect that actual settlement versus the projections that we have factored in. So then because expenses are all pacing revenues by one point two million dollars, um, the budget reduction assumption that's factored in is six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, which is then broken out to personnel and run personnel reductions. And you can see the categories and the departments impacted up on the screen. And then later in the presentation, you'll hear from each unit manager regarding what that looks like in their area. And then at the end, there'll be a more itemized list that indicates the positions in the various areas. So we will get into a greater level of detail here in a few slides. So then with that, um, we're going to kick off the unit manager, the administrator, um, reports for the evening. And I'll begin with my session, one of my sessions, which is our overall personnel budget. Um, and recommending that we start with our planning and personnel at twenty-six point two million, which is a modest increase over the prior year. And what we have factored in is a three and a half percent increase of overall personnel costs all across the district. Um, this number does reflect that reduction amount of a little less than seven hundred thousand dollars. And then of course, when we run a few tables, see where enrollment is in the fall, we'll factor in any positions that may be added over the summer. We'll come back with a revised number, um, in the winter and again next spring as well. And then with that, um, we'll start with our building presentations and we'll start with the high school, Rodney Micker.
Thank you, uh, Chair Google, members of the board. Um, I'm actually starting tonight, uh, filling in for, oh, we're starting the high school, okay.
Either one.
Let's start with, uh, let's start with the call actually, I just have that in there. So I'm filling in for, uh, my assistant principal, Jen Tletzey, who is also the, um, Crow River, Crow River Alternative Learning Center Director. Um, and so the budget, operations budget for last year and this year noted up there fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars. The call budget covers expenses for day, night, and summer school programming, uh, for call. Uh, the largest portion of that budget goes to our computer-based instruction program that we use called APAX. Uh, the way that APAX works, um, is it allows our students who need current recovery to align the coursework that they've already completed with the standards that they haven't and they, uh, address those standards that are missing through APAX. Um, so provides for a more streamlined approach and, uh, opportunity for our students. The, uh, enhanced summer school program that's, uh, highlighted there at the bottom. Um, what that looks like is that, um, in terms of change from years past. So what summer school looks like in years past is that we typically have, um, elective and required courses for our four core areas over the summer, so science, math, uh, social studies, and English. Um, as well, in years past, we've had high school one-on-one, which is a transition opportunity for eighth graders to ninth graders, you're going to have credit in terms of transitioning, uh, to the high school, learning about high school programming, high school opportunities, et cetera. Because of the COVID pandemic last summer, we were not able to offer high school one-on-one because, uh, obviously in-person and very intensive that way. So we set that aside for last summer because most of our offerings were, um, offered through distance. Uh, for this coming summer, we're returning to relatively sad to quote, what that looks like, so science, math, social studies, English, a lot of high school one-on-one, but then we're enhancing that, um, that core by offering some in-person, um, areas that we haven't offered in the past, so physical education, health, and welding. And so we've, uh, those will be C-based options, although relatively similar to what they do in the regular school year. Um, they will not be using APAX for our gaming for physical education, health, and welding. That, that's the hands-on, um, in-person opportunities. Um, as well, uh, one of the things that we did, we introduced last summer, which we're continuing for this summer, is, um, special services personnel. So we will have special education, uh, staff members supporting summer school. We, we were very successful in that model last year and we'll carry that forward into this year and hopefully beyond as well. So that's a little bit of what, what our enhanced summer programming looks like for call.
Rob.
Yes.
Okay, yes, real quick, does the, um, fiscal budget include what are costs to run that summer school program?
Yeah, so, um, the, uh, the staffing and then also the APAX budget is largely what accounts for that.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions I can call before we move on? Okay. And then this slide is the high school, um, operations budget. Uh, you'll notice for the past school year, our request was two hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars. A request for the coming school years, again, two hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars. Um, that represents the fourth consecutive year that we moved forward with a request that does not include an increase. Um, and so we actually had a decrease, two years ago, we had a decrease of about two point seven percent, reducing from two hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred dollars down to two hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars. Uh, that was in line with, um, reductions across the district two years ago. Um, and Director Boel mentioned, um, in her opening that, you know, inflation has to be taken into account as well. So when we track, uh, no requests over the last forty years plus inflationary losses in terms of the, the, um, buying ability of dollars, um, that's another twenty thousand dollars reduction essentially in terms of our buying ability. So we're trying to be, uh, very careful stewards of the district's dollars at the high school. And I think, of course, all our budget managers are. The largest area, for instance, in our high school budget is, um, in programming, specifically college and schools programming. We offer thirteen different college and schools options for our students, one fourteen AP option. But the college and schools options, um, to run those courses is roughly about three thousand, three thousand, five hundred dollars per course. And so, um, multiply that by thirteen, you get about forty thousand dollars that we have budgeted for college and schools programming. Uh, each of our content areas at high school has a line item budget ranging from about a thousand dollars up to sixteen thousand dollars and, um, depending on the course content area. So that accounts for, uh, our two hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred dollar request. Um, in addition, you'll notice there's a personnel reduction proposed for the coming year. Um, and that is based on enrollment, as Director Boel stated. Um, and so we'll request or proposing a reduction of one point oh FTE in mathematics, um, point three three FTE reduction in English. Um, and then along with that, we have some transfers within the district. So we'll see about point two zero of physical education transferred from high school to middle school. And then also, um, point five zero of reach transferred from high school to the middle school. Um, and that, um, buttresses a previous reduction from reach from the previous year. So essentially next year, there'll be one point oh, um, of reach at the middle school. Uh, that summarizes the, um, high school request for the coming year, but any questions on that area at all?
Maybe Mike and I have the same question, but, um, particularly math and English, what does that do to your class sizes?
Sure, so it actually brings math and English in line with the other, um, areas of our building. And so, uh, without a reduction in mathematics, currently you have six point oh FTEs of mathematics. Uh, without a reduction, we'd see a classroom average size of nineteen point five seven, which is actually smaller than our kindergarten class average. Um, and so by reducing one point oh FTE, we bring that in line with other departments such as English Language Arts, um, some of our elective areas as well. So for instance, we have a pretty high class average in facts for our coming year of twenty-seven point three five. So math would slot in at twenty-seven point one two, roughly in line with some of those other areas. Um, I mentioned the English Language Arts, um, reduction of point three three brings it, uh, to twenty-five point three seven. So again, in that range of, of, um, of courses as well, you know, music is at twenty-six point zero five, science twenty-four point three seven. So you see that we're roughly in the same neighborhood.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding these numbers correctly. So what is being funded from the two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars?
It's the day-to-day operations of the high school. Um, so things that support our program is not the days salaries or anything of that nature. So it's the infrastructure, materials that are needed to run a high school. And like I said, you know, the biggest, the forty thousand dollars is college and schools programming.
So with the reduction in staff in the building, there won't be any, any need for reduction to the operations budget that stays the same?
Yeah, that's, I'm hoping to stay the same for the, essentially the fourth consecutive year, yeah. So around with college and the schools, the whole point, where you point would be to not have students select PSEO.
Correct.
Well, yeah, so PSEO, college and schools, and APL serve to, you know, provide, uh, maximized, well, to maximize we're here for our students in terms of course content. So having strong CIS program, a lot of the strong AP program, um, you know, balances, uh, the opportunities for students to seek out, uh, opportunities elsewhere such as PSEO. So I guess if we, and then let's just say we get five, uh, students who choose to do college in the schools versus PSEO, where at what break-even point on what the, uh, college and the schools cost roughly?
You're right, yeah, so it's a, it's a much more, uh, favorable economic situation for the, for the high school to have, uh, to run a CIS course versus to lose that many students, uh, in, in equal amount of students to the PSEO.
Right, so I just want to make that clear that that's not all expanse.
Correct, yeah, yeah, there's a, there's a savings built in, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, can I ask one more question? I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
So you've included personnel reduction in your proposal for the budget. So what you're saying is looking at the overall budget, not this budget, not operations, but you're recommending a drop in, in math, English, language arts?
Yes, so we're really talking about two different parts, Director Boel, if you want to take that.
That, that's why I want to make sure I understand why it's on this slide if it's not in, in fact, to your operations budget.
Right, so each of our unit managers has an operating budget, um, supplies, um, equipment, purchase services, subscriptions, those sorts of things that are unique to their area and supporting all of their staff and what they do. Um, we have one personnel budget overall, which I introduced at the beginning of the presentation, but it's important for each administrator to explain why they're recommending what they recommend in their area when it's their turn to speak. And then at the end, I, I didn't feel like it had a cohesive feel if I put individual dollar amounts for the reduction associated with that unit or that, um, part of the budget here because then people might be feeling like they have to tally it up on their own. So each person is going to speak to their recommendation and then further down the slide deck, I'll sum it all up in aggregate and we'll show line item by line item. You know, the high school is recommending this, it totals this amount, and then these are the positions impacted. So then we'll kind of recap and pull it back altogether.
Okay, uh, last question for you. You, you mentioned that an increase in almost eight students for math class size brings it in line with the programs we offer?
Yep.
Where does that bring us in line with other school districts?
Sure, um, and so in terms of other school districts, I can't give you the, you know, class average size, but what I can tell you is the, the soft cap number that we've adopted, uh, at the high school. And so as a collaborative team, every year we talk about, you know, what our, um, our course maximum or our grade maximums that we would be accepting, what would be acceptable to us in our buildings and for our district. And so at the high school, that number is thirty-two. Um, and so in other districts, um, that number fluctuates based on local priorities. Um, as long as I've been here, it's been thirty-two. Um, in my previous, uh, position, when I was the assistant principal at Mankato East High School, our soft cap size was thirty-six. And again, that comes down to local priorities and where we choose to put our dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And just for historical reference, that number thirty-two comes from where? Or do you want to speak to Darren a little bit?
Yeah, is there a? I think I'm on now. As an administrative team, uh, we look at class sizes K-12 and then we do a comparison between that and the level of funding that we receive. So we know that we've got a max and a minimum. And if we run within that range overall, um, we can typically afford our program from year to year. So that's why, um, thirty-two, we, we think we start to lose effectiveness in the classroom if we go over that. Um, at times we do, um, but that's what we try to keep. But that's what we try to keep the high school class sizes at for educational effectiveness and still being able to afford the program that we have in place.
Do we ever think about the course in and of itself, right? For example, right, like would, could a welding class have 32 kids in it operating the machines? And is, could we maybe not equalize math versus a different subject, right? Like do we have, or is that just like an average or are we trying to hit?
Yes.
Sorry.
And Rob can maybe speak to this more, but we would never put 32 kids in a welding class. For one thing, we wouldn't have enough equipment and that would not be a safe environment. So you'll see that there is a difference between some elective courses, some of our core content courses. So what Rob is speaking to with the 32 is more of our core content courses. And even within some of those, those class sizes, we wouldn't want to put 32 in maybe some of the lab classes or if there might be some safety concerns or equipment concerns.
Yeah, sure, just to speak in more detail. So our 32 is our general number for a typical class at the high school. So some courses actually will average higher in some years, for instance, band. Right, we might have 32, a higher than average of 32 in band simply because they can accommodate it and that's fairly typical. In other areas, such as your question on welding, we cap welding at 16 for safety and space purposes. For CNA, because we partner with local entities and they can only support so many CNA students, we cap that at 20 for this year. We had to lower that cap from 24 to 20 based on a new partner during these COVID times. So it does vary based on the department and based on the course, based on the space, based on safety. All those things go into play. And then in terms of averages, one of the things we always have to remember is like, for instance, that math average I gave you with the proposed reduction down to 5.0 FTE of 27, that means that for every class that we would have at 32, we're equally as likely to have a class at 22, right? Based on averaging. So that's why I present it as a livable number because I believe it is.
Okay, thank you.
Does that take into consideration a failure rate that might just be a little higher this year than previous years?
Yeah, and so in terms of failure rate, we have multiple opportunities for students to address failures that occur. And so sometimes the students do attempt to address failures through retaking a course. What we've seen actually is more often than not, students will attempt to recover that credit through CROK. And there are daytime ALC, which is blocks five and six of the high school, or a night ALC or in summer school. So I guess in short, the way I would answer that is we don't see a whole lot of pressure in terms of class size on retaking courses over a trimester-long period. Any further questions regarding the high school at all? All right, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. For the activities budget for next year, you can see requested that there is an increase. And that is reflective of anticipated increase in state high school league fees, which are of course required for us to be a member of the state high school league, which allows our kids to participate in section and state tournaments. We saw an increase this year. Again, we're thinking that they're going to increase them again next year as well from an organization that right now is running in the red. And so I say we're thinking that they're going to request higher fees again from schools. And also increases the amount of money covered for our trainer coverage. We have partnered with Hutchinson Health over the last couple of years to make sure that we have our activities covered by an athletic trainer, which is, has been a huge help for us. It has been a huge help for the coaches, for the kids. We've used it quite a bit. It's been nice to make sure we have a trainer at more of our events. In fact, it's becoming the norm at schools. And there's been times where we haven't had coverage there and we get questioned by coaches, we get questioned by other parents. So having that trainer coverage there has been extremely helpful. So that is the two reasons for the increase in the activities budget for next year. You see that we do have a Level Two request for our boys swim program. We've seen a increase in participation in boys swimming. And so this past year, we added a third coach. And moving into next year, we will anticipate the need for that third coach as well. And the funding from that is going to come from actually a reduction in our middle school soccer program. The Hutchinson Soccer Association is going to take over running middle school soccer. And we will use that money then in that savings to help fund the third coach for boys swimming. Personnel reduction, there are some reductions in the activities budget. Some of them are positions that we have not filled in a few years. And so we're going to take those out of the budget. Those include a strength and conditioning assistant coach, yearbook advisor, which is now part of a class. So that is part of the curriculum. The school photographer, Mr. DeBrocker is retiring this year and we are not going to fill the school photographer position. And then BPA, Business Professionals of America, we have not filled that position in a couple of years. And so those will go unfilled. The ones that are currently filled that we are not going to fill next year strictly based on participation numbers, an assistant cross-country coach, an assistant softball, assistant speech, an assistant boys tennis position, and an assistant golf position. And as we've talked through these, of course, if participation numbers do increase, those are all positions that we could look at adding back again. But right now, just based on our participation numbers, it's not feasible to have those assistant positions.
Thing, can you tell me what the increase in dues to the Minnesota State High School League are?
We don't know yet, we don't have the hard numbers. We will know hopefully in the next month or so. And then once the state high school league releases that increase, we'll be able to get a better handle on exactly what the amount will be.
Who here is on the state baseball? When did you meet last?
We haven't.
Haven't?
I was told that they meet quarterly or kind of on a...
Yeah, you're more of a voting member than you necessarily handle the day-to-day operations of the high school league. I do believe that Minnesota State High School League has put together a task force on the fees. So we're waiting to see the results of what that looks like. But I don't, I don't see they've even met once yet.
Yeah, and we've talked about too as an admin team, I don't see them going back the other way in reducing fees at all. So it's a pretty safe assumption that we'll see an increase of some sort.
And so for a starting point, the increase we experienced this year, we've replicated that then again in the following year, which we're talking about right now is 2022. And then once we have more information, then we'll revisit that together.
And the increase this year was a flat increase for each activity that you offer. And then they also increased it, or they charged you per student enrollment.
Other than advocacy, we don't have a lot of control over what they're going to be though.
No.
Yeah, I saw a few other districts in the state that have seen some pretty huge increases. And they almost seem like they're applied without a lot of basis.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we had some say in it, but it's usually if you're going to belong to the league, this is what you're going to pay.
See, one note of clarification, Thing, you talked about not filling the BPA. I think a couple of these board members here have seen very strong BPA programs in the past. I just want to make sure it's clear that the reason it's not filled is you haven't had an applicant for the position.
Not, no, it's been open for two years now and we've had no applicants.
Is there a possibility that some of the, especially the assistant coaches would be filled by volunteers? Or is that something we're not going to consider? I just...
We certainly could, but bringing on volunteers changes their role a little bit. Right now, you know, like a volunteer coach would not be able to travel on their own with a team. Whereas the paid assistant coaches, you know, we can send a JV team somewhere with a paid assistant. Right now, district policy does not allow volunteer coaches to do that. So if we were to go that route, that's something we could explore in changing those policies a little bit. I know some districts also rely heavily on booster associations to pay for coaches, which is certainly something to explore as well.
Do you know when that policy's up for renewal?
It's just, it's in the handbook, the student handbook or the activities handbook, which is going to be looked at again this summer.
Thank you.
What happens without a photographer? Because the Hutchinson leader doesn't send a reporter to our events.
Right. I will say that in the school districts I've worked in, having a school photographer is quite unique. There aren't a lot of school districts that have someone on staff strictly dedicated to photography. And so a lot of times what happens is they will contract with, say, a Jostens or another photographer company to come out and take the team photography. And then any photography that happens at events, like you're speaking of Joellen, happens either through the yearbook, through students, or again, looking at that volunteer, you know, parent, if they would be willing to take that on.
Good evening. The community education budget does reflect our operations and also our personnel, I just want to note that. So those are included in our requested budget. There does show about a little over 7,000 increase and that is due to this budget of 2022 reflecting more of what it looked like back in 2019, pre-COVID pandemic. The balance is to keep participation up and we are hoping to see that participation in our programs increasing back as we go into a hopefully more normal year. When programs are canceled, the expenses do go away. But also the companion revenues that do come along with those programs would also then go away. But we're hoping that all those participation numbers and participants will be back so we can reflect this budget that looked more like 2019.
So with an increase, is that for additional employees? Or is that just supplies for higher participation in events?
It's just back to the regular, what we were at operating back for personnel, the people that support our programs and then also supplies needed for those programs. It just looked different because we had a lack of programming the last two years. Any other questions?
Welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening. The next area is early childhood family education. ECFE is the acronym that we use. This also includes early childhood screening, this budget. This budget comes from Fund Four. And so it is separate budgets, separate revenue streams, and also includes staffing plans for the ECFE and early childhood screening staff. ECFE is a state-funded aid entitlement. It receives revenue through levy dollars, tuition, grants, donations, fundraisers. And there is also a fund balance that we've been, we see each year. ECFE is a consumer-driven program and so it is based on enrollment of families that sign up for it. The fiscal '22 changes anticipate some salary increases as well as some supplies, furniture, et cetera, for the new space that is coming to West Elementary. We're super excited about it. So there is an increase in the budget this year for that equipment and furniture. We do have an adjustment in some of the hours. We are, we went into our planning with some really big ideas for ECFE as far as some really fun courses, as well as some extension into summer offerings for families and children. And so we'll see what happens with those. We're hoping that we have an increase in participation with hopefully COVID being over. Any questions about ECFE? All right. The next program I'm representing is our school readiness plan, Learn Preschool. This also is a Fund Four program. So it does have separate budgets, separate revenue streams, and staffing plans. It is funded through some state dollars, school readiness dollars, pathway dollars, which is an application that we write. And we just received notification that we received those dollars. We receive pathway, oops, I'm sorry to say that, pathway dollars and then state and levy dollars. It also includes some tuition revenue, some fundraisers, and then the special education tuition that is also included in the program for students that attend and also has a fund balance. The changes that we are anticipating show some salary changes, some anticipated salary changes, some changes in some transportation costs, some tech replacements, those kinds of things, even though the amount is less than it was last year. We did decrease, and well, our plan this year is to not offer busing for our three-year-olds. And so that is a decrease in the program overall.
How many families use busing for three-year-olds?
I do not have that number right off the top of my head. I would say it was less than half of the students.
Do you think you'll see a reduction in enrollment for families that maybe don't have the ability to get those younger kids to school?
So far, we do not. We have good enrollment so far, there are still a few spaces left. For some families, putting a three-year-old on a bus is not what they're looking for for that first year. So we do bus special education students, but this is for our typical three-year-olds. And I am up again. So this is the West Elementary budget for fiscal year '22. The amounts up top are the operational supply budgets for instructional materials, supplies, general supplies. And so no major changes in any of those categories for this coming school year. The personnel reduction is being presented as potential reductions based on enrollment. The impact of those numbers and how it impacts our different sections in kindergarten, how many classrooms we have. Currently this year, we have 18 classrooms. We have two full-time distance learning teachers and then the rest are in-person. So 16 in-person and then the two full-time distance learning. The budget for fiscal year '22 is being built on a worst-case scenario, which is 16 sections, eight and eight. But we are hoping and we are working hard to gain enrollment to be an 18-section K1 school.
Is there anything we can do to help you?
We just want to keep spreading the word, the importance of families enrolling their child in kindergarten and completing, fully completing the enrollment process. When Gen Guler registration, Becky mentioned before, there's 160 students enrolled. There are actually more students that have started, or families that have started the process, but maybe they haven't completed the process. And so that's the biggest thing, is just making sure that families get that enrollment done if they're new. And then also the yearly update. So we can secure how many students are returning for, you know, from kindergarten to first grade, first grade to second grade and all the way through. That registration and that enrollment process is really important to us right now. So just keep encouraging. We are, we have contacted all of our kindergarten families on our census. In fact, we have made second calls now. Many times we are leaving messages, as you guys have experienced from contacting people. We are encouraging them to leave a message, to email if they are available or only able after hours. But you can leave a message on our voicemail as well as send in an email to let us know your plans for your child.
And, sorry, potentially, do you know what percentage of those kindergartners lost that you've recouped, have been recouped so far?
So kindergarten going into first grade? Yeah, the beginning number, many of those families returned. Some of them were homeschooling and they returned to in-person. And some of them were distance learning. Um, some of them were homeschooling, and they returned to in-person, and some of them were distance learning families returned to in-person. So for example, in kindergarten, we started out with fifteen distance learning families or students, and we're down to eleven now. Those families came back. Uh, in first grade, we had fourteen distance learning students to start the year, and they also are at eleven. And those students all returned back to West Elementary. Families who are homeschooling or maybe at another school, um some of them have indicated they're returning. Um, some of them just tell us tell us that they're unsure at this time.
Okay. And Becky, I have one question too. I think maybe you mentioned this already, that hypothetically, there were about a hundred and seventy-one that you were planning on. Did I hear that number right, or?
One seventy-two.
One seventy-two, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Ann, is the personal reduction proposal one teacher in kindergarten and one teacher in first grade?
Correct. That's my plan right now. Um, and again, those would be adjusted based on enrollment.
Thanks.
Might have to do some shuffling around. The other um proposed reduction is the um we'll be hiring an art teacher at West Elementary, and that hire will be based on the number of sections that we have. So it's a potential to be a point-nine art teacher position. Um, could be a one-point-oh again, depending on enrollment.
Ann, can I ask you a follow-up question to that?
Yes.
How do you feel the para-support is right now at West with the para-to-student ratio? And is that ideal for where you would like to be headed into next year?
Um, so there are multiple paraprofessional or support staff positions. Um, several are under the special education umbrella, and those are assigned per IEP and team decisions. I guess every year that's different based on the number of students and the level of needs that we have. One of the challenges at West is students come in uh with needs. They haven't been discovered in our community, and they come in with some pretty um big um either academic or socially emotional needs. And we work really hard through the entire kindergarten year to get those supports in place for them, but it does take time. Um, and then we have uh some support staff in our intervention program. Um, that's type uh funded through Title One as well as some ADSS, or Alternative Delivery of Instructional Services. Um, that program, those people also support supervision positions, uh which is important playground, hallways, um cafeteria, et cetera. And right now with the current um staffing that I have, we have enough of those positions. Um, I would say that um our intervention program that if there was additional people to help support small group instruction, I would say that teachers would support that. Based on, you know, reading and math needs. Uh, right now, we uh assess all of our students, and then we identify the ones who who are at the highest risk. And we, those are our priorities, and then we do have some time left over in the day that we can support students who are at some risk identified through assessments, uh which is nice too. I think that every year, the amount of support staff need looks different.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I represent the Park Elementary budget, and you can see that there's a little difference between the this current year's budget and um requested next year's budget, and that is due to Park Elementary splitting into Tiger Elementary and Park and then the continued four or five of Park Elementary. So Tiger Elementary is going to be the two-three school, and that's the the name of that school, and then Park will stay four-five. Um, and that it'll be separated. So we basically cut that budget in half um for next year. Um, that budget does supply everything from copies to tape dispensers to um consumables that we use in math and reading um for for staff, um books, things like that. So it really covers the broad spectrum for it in the past thirty-three sections of students. And uh moving forward next year, half of that um for for budgeting um reasons there, so. Um, any questions about the budget um for Park Elementary?
I have a question, uh Dan, and it might be for for all the elementary, but um so if the budget was seventy-five thousand and we lost a hundred and eighty-some students, do you have some of those supplies that are left from this year that you'll be using next year?
Yeah, well, we, I don't believe Park lost that many uh students.
No, that that's the whole dis-
Oh, yeah, yes. Yeah, there's always a few extras. It it ebbs and flows as um quite a bit. Um, it as far as budgeting goes, you know, sometimes um as we, you know, the technology world, we have um maybe we use less paper, but then we have more subscriptions to technology um programs. So um it go, it 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 seems like it always is even-steven in my world. So it uh sometimes there's a savings here, but then there's an expense there, so. Um, but no, we always uh pull, you know, that we we have uh Everyday Math, which is one of those uh programs that we always buy a little extra, you know, journals, and then our our um CIA Read Side-by-Side Curriculum has has some consumables, and we always, you know, they they fit this year as as well as next year, so. Yeah, there's there's some sa- savings, obviously, when you have fewer kids. Um, and uh, you know, at times, we don't use all of our budget as well, so. I'll jump right into then. Uh, so that's the difference there in in the splitting of the two schools. And then the the proposed personnel re- uh personnel reductions. So we have uh thirty-three sections of of classrooms this year. So uh we have nine second grade, eight third, uh eight fourth, and eight fifth grade um sections. As we move into next year, both for Tiger Elementary and Park Elementary, the 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 request or the uh the uh uh you know, we're we're the proposed reduction would be to have one less second grade moving from nine sections to eight, and one less fourth grade moving from eight sections to seven sections. Um, both are ones that we're going to watch carefully. Um, they do fit in uh or at at present. If we were to just roll the kids over tomorrow into their new grade, so taking the first graders going to second all the way through fourth to fifth, we would see um class sizes close to what we want for our our targets. Um, some like second grade and fourth grade very close to the max, um and we'll have to watch those carefully as we um see what some of the those those students that that we were talking about here, um are they going to come back? Um, some of those homeschooled students, are they, if they come back, I think then we'll have to really look hard at uh what we want to do for class sizes and keeping them within that target range.
What is our target range?
Well, I believe I have this right here, but it's second grade is between twenty-two and twenty-four. Um, third grade is twenty-three, twenty-five, fourth grade twenty-four, twenty-six, and fifth grade kind of twenty-six, twenty-eight. If that, if I'm close to, yeah.
One follow-up on the supply budget piece. There are unspent supply budgets each year all across the district. And then what we do is we take a look at how we could deploy those unspent funds by the end of the fiscal year. And so then we take a look at our facilities and technology needs, the curriculum replacement cycle, and what things are going to be needed for curriculum writing hours over the summer so that we can put those dollars into those needs um within about a five-week period of time. So there isn't unspent dollars um um in any given year. We kind of throughout the year keep moving funds around to try to maximize meeting needs as we progress month to month to month.
In, yeah. Any other questions for me?
Is it just those two grade levels for your proposed personnel reductions?
Correct. At this time.
It's exciting to introduce a new building. So the directors are going to go back and forth a little bit so that we can tell you how as a system we're going to provide services to staff and students um in that location. So you'll hear from everybody on this screen, and we'll do a introduction and kind of lay our base plan for that building. Um Superintendent Superintendent Vanderheiden, excuse me, will begin with the administration.
So we're going to administrate the building with a building principal, a lead secretary, a full-time nurse, and um we'll probably add some additional support staff in the office during some of the really busy times in the morning, and then maybe also in the afternoon before release. Um, as you guys know, because you've been part of the design process for Tiger Elementary, that we designed that building to run as an independent school. Uh, we had to make that decision long before we started the design process. So um just like West Elementary and just like Park Elementary, it'll operate as an independent school, and we're going to share services with West wherever we can where it makes sense. So that's how it's um, we're going to administer the building, and then with that addition of a principal there, we've also reduced one assistant principal, um so it's an even change there. So um I know uh that's my piece of it, and I don't know if we're going to go right down the list, Becky?
Yes, yes. Oops, got to remember the button. Okay. And then with respect to the office staff, we're going to have a lead administrative assistant in each of the elementary locations. And then our current administrative assistants, K-twelve, we're going to take a look at days and hours, and then support with those existing staff, all of the locations. And then we'll also have one media para per elementary building. So that's the current plan, and so we'll um see how things go when we move in in December, and then we can always reevaluate um any of these items on this slide as we plan then for our first full year, which would be the twenty-twenty-three school year.
In uh, excuse me, in the area of nursing, um once the transition to Tiger Elementary takes place, we will be increasing the nursing staff to one-point-oh. So we'll have a full-time nurse in all buildings across the district. Uh, for special services, we'll be doing some shifting of staff. We will have um a learning disabilities teacher that will shift to grades two, three. We'll have an EBD teacher that will shift to grades two, three. And our DCD teacher will become K-three, and our ASD teacher will become K-three. And then we'll remain at Park Elementary, we'll still have a four um fourth-grade LD teacher, a fifth-grade LD teacher, and a four-five EBD teacher, and then a four-five ASD DCT, DCD teacher. Um, we'll also have the social worker who will be covering grades K-three. So it'll be shared between West Elementary and Tiger Elementary.
No social worker at Park?
Oh, sorry, yes. At Park, there is a social worker that is half um special education and half ADSS.
Okay.
I have a question about the nursing.
Yes.
So you said we're adding one FTE?
Well, it's not a whole FTE. We currently have a part-time, we have a one full-time and one part-time nurse at Park Elementary. So we'll be increasing the part-time to full-time. A majority of that will be paid for through MA funds, which we collect through billing, through third-party billing. So it should not be an impact on the budget overall.
And does West currently have?
And West already has a nurse right now, yes.
One-point-oh?
Yes.
As uh Darren spoke to, when uh Tiger Elementary um officially opens in the um late fall, early winter of twenty-twenty-one, uh we need to start the school year, however, um at Park Elementary, grades two through five, but essentially run that as two separate buildings is what we're going to try to do. Um, and so when students are there, uh they know that um uh Mr. Dogs will be the two-three principal, and Mr. Olberg will be the four or five. Yes, they're going to start in the same building, but when that uh transition happens in the winter, we want to try to make that as as seamless as possible. And so that uh goes within how we're going to be managing some of these programs. So we talk about building operations. That's what I'm was speaking to, was trying to essentially run that as two buildings, even though they'll be in one. We talk about our title, um Title One interventions and our ADSS. Uh, we wrote the ADSS application as such to so that when we split, that we'll build a split act. And then the title application's going to have some work this summer because, and I'll speak to this a little later, but uh Title One allocations are based on free reduced lunch counts as your whole district. So you put all of those in, they allocate how much money based on your whole district free reduced, and then you need to determine, and there's some intricacies to it, and some regulations you need to follow, but what buildings you are going to run your title programmings in. And then based on where those free reduced counts end up in those specific buildings is what our allocations are going to be. So we're going to have to do some work this summer with that application um in order to um, and that really drives where the staff go uh with the title application. So that fluctuates year to year based on your free reduced numbers and and then uh where those staff are appropriated. And it can vary from year to year. Fortunately, we've been um had a stable allotment of dollars in the overall title application, which I can get to later. Same thing with targeted services, again, running that. There's a slide a little lame, but I can speak to that now. Um, that what uh Mr. Olberg will be talking about in terms of the park targeted services is really essentially going to split, then we go to a new building.
I have a quick comment about the principals. Um, it might be that I'm a little old-fashioned about it, but I always thought that the principals that I worked for were master teachers and experts in curriculum. So the fact that we have are going from an assistant principal to a principal to me is um it it's an amazing advantage for those students because they'll get the expertise of a new administrator. It's my opinion.
Good evening. Brian Moore, Director of Buildings, Grounds, and Student Transportation. I'll speak a little bit to the planned operations of Tiger Elementary. There's two components of that, and I'll speak at this time about personnel. Later on in the presentation, I'll speak about the operating budget and the changes on that because it shows up on another slide. Um, we plan on running Tiger Elementary School as and West Elementary School as one building. It's not an educational process, it's a support process primarily after hours. So it'll be four-point-five FTE custodians at that complex. One lead custodian will manage that staff. There will be one daytime custodian in each one of those because we need to have that in the cafeteria during lunchtime periods. So to accommodate that, we need to move staff around a little bit in the district. At Park Elementary School, there will be a reduction of one FTE there, so that will go from four to five. There'll be a half FTD FTE reduction at the middle school and another half FTE reduction at the high school. So what this does, though, it 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 levels the playing field a little bit about with uh responsibility of custodial effort. The the custodial effort depends a lot on the 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 dynamics of that building. A prime example is that the high school has large open spaces that are very efficient to clean. Also, some of those aren't used on a daily basis like the auditorium or the competition gym, nor are the shops. The students clean up the bulk of the shops. So those areas kind of throw a little bit of dynamic change into the square foot calculations. But at the high school, when uh the moving stops, it'll be about thirty-nine thousand four-hundred-and-twenty square foot per custodian. Um, as opposed to at West and Tiger Elementary School, that will be the low, where it's twenty-nine thousand four-hundred square feet per custodian. And those little kids uh create quite a bit more mess. Plus, there are smaller intimate spaces that that take more effort to clean. Um, the middle school will be thirty-two thousand two-hundred-and-forty-three square foot per custodian, and Park will be thirty-four thousand one-hundred-and-seventy-three. Once again, Park has that big auditorium with all those seats that doesn't really get cleaned every day. Um, so across the board, it's very equitable throughout the district with these moves that are proposed.
What's the net change in FTE?
Um, there is no net change to FTE, it's just moving. Um, we will be picking up, and this change, when the high school was built, we gained about twenty-six thousand square feet. With Tiger Elementary School, we'll add another forty-five. So with those two, we we will have increased seventy-one thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-three square feet.
Okay.
With-
No new staff.
But we've, we're able to accommodate a lot of that by equipment changes and efficiencies with that. Um, we chose oversized elevators so we could get bigger riding scrub scrubbers and sweepers up those. Um, and that saves a lot of time in doing that.
And the following year, it'll change again when Park, the back, I mean, the-
Yeah.
What is old is new, is torn down.
So the numbers I gave you reflect the final-
Okay.
Cost, are the the final square foot figures. We're only taking about thirty-one thousand square feet um off of Park Elementary School, and that's primarily just raw classrooms. We do have the big multipurpose room downstairs, but it's it's not as big as what we think.
Sure.
Brian, did anybody have to switch from like a day shift to a night shift? Is like the timing of people?
Um, during this, I will say no. Um, I have one and a half FTEs retiring at the end of this school year. So, we post those jobs internally, so there will be actually two daytime jobs that will become available. And, um, for the most part, they tend to be more coveted, uh, those daytime jobs. So, there's actually going to be two that are available. So, we'll have to hire, um, one and a half employees later on in this school year. Um, we won't refill that half FTE next fall until Tiger is open, but the full one that's retiring this spring, we'll do closer to next school year. So, nobody is being forced to move. We'll do it via internal postings and, and where people want to go.
Good evening. Nick Schmidt, the Director of Technology. As far as, um, technical support at the new Tiger Elementary, we won't have to make any staffing changes. We have, uh, direct, um, centralized support services already at the high school, and those will continue to be provided there for Tiger Elementary. Um, we will have to, of course, purchase networking equipment and, uh, quite a few different, uh, technologies for the new building, um, many of which will be partially covered with E-rate funding, um, and the construction budget, so. I think that's all.
Any other questions on Tiger Elementary?
Food service, right?
Oh, thank you. Jump ahead.
Good evening. So, for, uh, food service at Tiger Elementary, we'll be adding a new satellite kitchen. So, this won't be a typical kitchen we do have in the district. It'll be mostly just for, um, serving purposes. But it will be adding two more serving lines, and then we'll have a POS. And a person will be running, um, to the original kitchen, um, to get our food because all the production of the food will be paired in the current kitchen we have now. So, there'll be some shifting of people, but we also will be adding some labor, um, with new positions or, um, adding some hours to our current staff.
Thank you, though. So, in terms of Tiger Elementary, uh, again, just the operational budget piece, it is, um, almost half, splitting that in half from what Park's operational budget is. And just some of the variances, just the different grade level needs and, and supply areas that are with that with the grade split. So, it is almost half, but some of those, uh, line items are just a little different just based on the grade level needs and what it's going to be offered in those buildings.
Good evening. Um, mine is on the Alternative Learning Center, which is basically our focus program. This is just reflects the supplies that we use each year. Uh, mostly have been math manipulatives, but, um, it could change in the, in the future to some other programming, too.
Bill, do you have the same student population year after year in focus or?
Yeah, for the most part, we identify kids that we think might be at risk. Sometimes it, it, there's a lot of different areas. One, that we, we identify kids that might be especially low in reading. Um, we want them to have success in reading. We found that the reason we switched to reading from social studies is because we found that kids were struggling in math right away, and it was causing impacting the rest of their school day. So, we changed it to have math to be a focus. Um, we also target kids that need coaching. You know, kids that need, need the self-esteem buildup. They need, they need to be able to get engaged, the organizational skills, the executive functioning skills. So, our clientele or our kids that we choose are the same basically each year. And it's, it varies from starting in sixth grade with identifying maybe as low as 12 kids to going up to 18 to 20 kids by the time they're in eighth grade.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. I'm Brenda, the middle school principal, and, uh, looking at next year, the $55,534 are, um, that has been consistent across several years back, as, as Rob mentioned in the high school. However, last year, we did increase that 500, um, and we kept it this year with that same amount, um, to be able to provide more opportunities for students, um, when the Southwest Service Co-op has different workshops, writing workshops to send kids to some of those activities. Nothing happened this year with the COVID year, but we left it in for next year for just opportunities out there for students. So, that amount basically covers instructional supplies and other items to, for middle school operation. Everything like what Mr. Olberg mentioned, from buying tape to paper to markers to, um, science, you know, experiment-type, um, instructional things. So, um, on to the next part, the personnel reduction. I just want to say, this was, um, this was difficult for me. Um, difficult decisions to make, as well as it is, I know it was, for all the administrators. But we will be, uh, reducing one math FTE, and we're reducing one FIAD FTE. So, um, when we look at a ripple effect, one math teacher, teacher from the high school, when they make a math reduction, moves down to the middle school. So, there's a ripple effect that happens, and then teachers keep kind of bumping down. So, one of our math teachers, which is currently our focus teacher, will be moving to Park Elementary. Um, our FIAD teacher that we reduced, we do have lower numbers, um, in FIAD and the elective areas, and our FIAD teacher will be moving to West Elementary. So, um, but I encourage you to think as a board, you know, how, how these reductions do have that ripple effect um, throughout. You know, sometimes we look at just our building, but then it does ripple out to other buildings. So, I just want to mention, what does this do for, um, class size? So, when we look at math, uh, we're looking at 210 students next year in sixth grade and seven sections all across, seven sections, math, science, social studies. There'll be 30 students in sixth grade math. In seventh grade, there'll be about 30.14 students. Um, and in eighth grade, there'll be 31.71 students if we just look at seven sections. And that is having half of the students return that are homeschooled or online academy schooling. We figured that in. Um, I just also, too, with that ripple effect, um, our social studies and science classes remain about the same. Um, and the reason we can keep them at that number, um, is that we, we have a class called WIN, which is, teachers teach four subjectory classes and then a fifth class, which is WIN, what I need. It's what the students need. And we're looking at next year really focusing that with a laser focus to help with COVID recovery. But with, with, um, the FIAD reduction, none of our FIAD teachers will have WIN next year uh, because they'll be supplementing in to, to teach classes. Um, so, we are going to be having a reduction of six WIN classes just across the building. And that does have a, have a ripple effect.
So, how many students would be in a WIN class with those reductions?
Um, oh, gosh, I don't have it right in front of me.
Sorry.
I, I, I do have it figured, but not right in front of me.
Okay.
I can get that to you.
And those WIN classes, if I'm remembering correctly from our conversation, is you identify a program that students are struggling in, and that block of instruction is for them to work on that?
Um, yes, that's one. It can be targeted interventions happening during WIN class. It can also be enrichment.
Okay.
You know.
For students excelling to.
Enrich. Um, so, we've got work to do before next fall to make all this flow. So, it's not just 55 minutes of, oh, what are we going to do today? There's a system.
Brenda, do you know what the math class sizes would be without the reduction? Do we have that number figured out? I'm just curious what one FTE does to a math class in the middle school.
Well, they would be similar to our class size now, that range anywhere from 19 to 31. There's, there's quite a, quite a range based on the schedule, once the schedule's put together.
I have a follow-up question to that. If, uh, one FTE in math, does that somehow change the rotation or the flexibility of schedule for WIN at all? Does that help?
Uh, we have one math teacher that will not have a WIN class.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if, if, um, yeah. If I took that WIN class away from that math teacher, our math numbers would go up. So, not having WIN next year would be, uh, two FIAD teachers, and then the one that comes from the high school for a point two won't have WIN. Social studies teacher, a science teacher, and a math teacher will not have WIN.
Any other questions?
I have a question about the class size. I'm just, so, uh, Tiffany asked you, if there wasn't a math reduction, you said it would be anywhere from 19 to 35?
32. Right now, we've got 31, 32. Um.
So, I just don't understand why it can't be balanced so that there's an average of 30, and just like.
Well, that's our goal. Our goal is to do that. This year, this year with COVID, it was difficult scheduling.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that balance is hard. Um, if you do want to look at a pure mathematical average, it's 20.44 average class size in math.
Right now?
Or if you, you ask the question, if you don't factor out the 1.0?
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Welcome.
It'd be 20.
On average. That was the number that the middle school supplied to, to us.
And so, the average would go up by almost 10 students to 30?
Correct, depending on how they work through the schedule over the summer. We show, um, 28.57. But there may be some with larger, some smaller. That's the average, mathematical average.
Brenda, one more question. Can you talk about what, with the proposed, um, reduction with your now focus teacher potentially moving to Park? What is the plan?
The plan?
For that?
Um, one, one section of a sixth grade teacher will teach a sixth grade focus math. One seventh grade teacher will teach a seventh grade focus math. So, it will not be the same person. Like, right now, that teacher loops. They work with them in sixth grade. They work with them in seventh grade. They work with them in eighth grade and really get to know the students, the families, and the needs. So, that'll be different next year. And, and we're looking at reshaping, doing some things different, right? Um, and there's lots of unknowns, you know?
Targeted services, um, this represents not just our summer program, but also our after-school and morning program. Um, we have AM targeted services that, obviously because of COVID, we, we, we had limited participation because usually when kids came to school, they went directly to their homeroom. So, we kind of limited that a little bit. But after-school program, we still ran that, and we ran it virtually and in-person once we were in-person. So, we had kids in the classroom and then kids that were virtually. And we usually supply with, with two different staff members if the need's there. Sometimes it could be one staff member four days a week. And that's what this covers. And also, it covers our summer program. And, uh, and, um, our summer program is, 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 we're going to run it basically the same because we always thought we had an enhanced summer program anyway. So, we're going to do basically the same thing we normally do. We're going to offer reading and math, and also, we're, we're going to offer an elective. Usually, we've always had like a STEM class, a science class, but we're going to go beyond that. Do a STEM for a week, do a fax for a week, do a ticket for a week, do some social studies, things like that. Just change it up a little bit. Um, our goal in summer is going to be still the same, is that we don't want the gap to grow. We want to hold serve. We want these kids engaged in the summer. And, and we know that, that our recovery is going to happen in the fall. That's when it's going to happen. You know, our teachers, it's going to be when we get the kids fully there. Because we also want kids to have a summer because they need that, too. Coming to school, they've been coming to school wearing masks. We want them to get beyond that. So, that's why we go three days a week, only in the mornings, just so they, they don't feel that it's like school. We want it to be different. We want it to be enjoyable. That's our goal. So, we'll do a lot more gaming than reading in both math.
I have a question. What, uh, maybe this is for you, Becky. Why isn't S R money used for like the targeted services, summer schools and?
That's a, that's a great question. It shows up in later slides. So, targeted services is our base summer school programming and base funding stream. And so, then in addition to that funding stream this year, we'll be applying S R two and potentially S R three dollars as well to run the enhanced program that we currently have available, and we're taking registrations for, et cetera. So, the targeted services slides that you're seeing tonight are the base program. And then we'll talk further about, you know, because we'll need to spend more than that amount on that slide to run the enhanced program that we have designed for this summer and next summer.
Okay, I'll move into the summer school for Park Elementary and, uh, moving forward. So, the 62,184 does run our summer school and our school year, um, program as well at Park Elementary for four grade levels. Uh, we run a summer program in, in the past with, um, about four weeks of, four, four days a week for about four hours, um, is our normal summer school time. And that, and then during the school year, we do Tuesdays and Thursdays before school for just a little over an hour, um, with those kids, and then they go into, um, go, go up to class. So, that kinds of, that's kind of what summer school or targeted services looks like at Park Elementary. Um, and then the, the level, or the, uh, level two request, then, you can see that's, again, cut in half, um, getting prepared for Ta- or Tiger Elementary, um, as we move forward. So, um, and that will happen, um, you know, right around the time that we basically start the school year program. We give a, a few, few months, uh, break in between summer and, in the school year program. Um, and that would probably run right up to that time where we'll start the school year program in November, uh, or December at Tiger Elementary. Any questions about kind of the past or what targeted services has looked like? Um, and then I'll move into the enhanced summer school, um, that we've been working on daily, almost, uh, as we move forward here with, with some exciting news for the summer. Any questions on targeted for, okay. So, our enhanced summer school is going to be very, very different than what we've had in the past. Um, and in our normal summer school, we don't provide transportation. Um, we, uh, it's, it's about, like I said, four hours a day for four weeks and, um, in, in this, or for four days for four weeks. And, uh, we're, our, our plan is to do an, almost an, an eight-hour day, um, for four days during the week, or four days a week for about seven weeks out of the summer. So, um, pretty much outside of maybe a week before we start back with new, new, new staff and the week after school and July 4th, we're running summer school, uh, throughout the summer. Um, the, the, uh, so, some of the changes, uh, number one, it's going to be at the middle school because of some of the, um, construction going on at both West and Park. So, that's going to be very different, uh, for us. Um, another, uh, big piece is we're trying, it's going to be an academic support. So, these are students that are going to summer school that we feel could use that extra support in both reading and math and some social, um, pieces as well. Um, so, we're, we're going to have curriculum that will deal with that and, as well as, um, activity-based. So, we're going, we're really trying to engage these kids throughout the summer, um, giving them a very positive experience with activities, um, outside time. Um, and then, you know, some creative time, building time. So, um, we're excited about that, although we're nervous as well to try to coordinate that and get that up and running. Um, we have two coordinators that are working really hard every single day and night. I just emailed one of them, um, just moments ago. It's just constant, um, Heather Valencourt, and then also Mike McDowell, who are putting in a lot of extra time on top of their current jobs to. to get this up and running. Like I said, we meet almost, we eat daily, um, at our, about at noon. Um, and, uh, kind of a working lunch, although I think I'm the only one who ha- eats during that time. Um, and to organize, uh, this big, big program. So, um, it's, it's, we've got, again, we've got busing. We've never had that before. Um, and then all this time to really engage students in not a typical, what a typical school day would look like during the, during the nine-month school year. So, um, we're excited about it. It's been a lot of work. Um, and, uh, I hope, did I, what, what did I miss here?
I think another, I, I think about it as, um, summer school two point oh because it has really, really, um, changed. Um, super proud that we're able to offer this K-five for our students. Um, and in addition to busing, the new, um, ad I guess is providing some meals for the students as well. So there will be a breakfast lunch or snack as well as the noon meal. So we're super excited about that. The activity part is, you know, exploring our city. There's a lot of places, um, and exciting things that, uh, we can share with our students. Uh, so one thing I would, um, give a shout out to is that if anyone has any a- activity or visiting kinds of learning opportunities throughout our community, um, please contact either Mr. Olberg or myself. Um, and we can start planning out those activity ideas. Um, I think, I think that's it. Any questions about our enhanced summer school program, which we are calling Summer Bridge? We're trying to get away from calling it a summer school, so it's Summer Bridge.
I have one question, um, for you. I, I really applaud all your efforts and all the work that's gone in to developing this, um, for the kids this summer. I just have a general question and I don't mean this as a critique. I'm just curious about how you came to the idea that kids could go for eight hours a day, four days a week, seven weeks and and fit in this certain enrollment versus going to four hours or six hours a day, three days a week for four weeks. Fitting, potentially fitting in more kids, or maybe it doesn't work like that. But just in general, how you came to the development of that schedule and maybe why?
I think one of the focus areas in the Summer Bridge program is building community and relationships. Relationships is one of our core values. And I think that we are trying to create a classroom cohort where they can build those relationships and build, uh, have that feeling of safety and risk-taking. And in order to move forward in learning, you need to be, feel safe and be able to take a risk with that group that you're in. So these students, um, besides moving to a different building, uh, is a new thing. They will be with a different group of students as well as a different group of staff. And so if we have, we're looking for continuity as well, uh, as far as programming and activities and experiences. And so we're looking for that consistent enrollment because some of the activities will carry over from day to day. Um, I think about friendships and if students are leaving, you know, at ten o'clock in the morning, a lot of fun and exciting things are happening in the afternoon. So when they show up again the next day at eight, they might feel out of the loop. Uh, conversations with their friends or having to catch up on something. Um, so we are looking for that continuity, um, and consistent attendance. But we have had conversations with parents who have inquired about a shortened schedule, um, for multiple reasons. So we're not saying no to that, but we do feel like the, the entire experience will be most beneficial to students. And that social, emotional relational, relationship piece of Summer Bridge.
And maybe just, you know, part of the population too, this was enticing to them to be able to say, yes, I'll do it. Where in the past, if it wasn't that full-day experience, they might've said no to that.
Sure.
Because it just wasn't feasible.
And with busing, I think that that matters and meals and having all that available is terrific.
I have a couple of questions. Um, uh, you talked about combining activities with course time. What are you looking at for a ratio there? How much of that day is gonna be built outside in the community? Having fun, creating memories versus classroom time?
Yeah, and I think we're still working on that schedule at this time, but we, i- i- I would say it's gonna, a ratio of about half. Fifty-fifty, um, where we're, um, gonna do that, uh, and, you know, the, the kinds of things that we wanna do, um, it, you know, during the academic portion, isn't gonna be what it maybe looks like in a typical classroom on a daily basis. You know, it might be, you know, my math games, um, you know, uh, you, you know, those kinds of activities. So it's, it's, I, I don't think it's gonna look like if you would walk past, um, a classroom in a, in a, during a normal, uh, typical school day. So we're trying to be en- engaging. We know that these kids have had a long year too, and as, as of staff. Um, and so, uh, we, 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 it's not that we wanna go full throttle with academics all summer long. We, we definitely wanna throttle it back, make it fun, make it engaging, meaningful, um, but not, uh, not full throttle for sure.
Okay. Um, and then are we actively identifying students and inviting them to participate? As well as opening participation up to students who we might not think have a need? Can families enroll their students without an invitation?
We have, we have been, uh, right, right now only looking at our, the, the, uh, the, the kids that we've targeted. Again, those who have been receiving, um, support, I think we are open to definitely looking at, uh, case-by-case kind of a situation with students. If we feel that, uh, if a parent feels that there's a strong need for that, um, academic and or social piece, um, you know, I, I, let's say it was a distance learner who had no, um, you know, uh, contact or very little personal contact with other students and, you know, that, that might be an, an area where maybe their academics are okay, but they need that social piece. I mean, that could be a, a scenario where I think that might be a good fit for our program this summer. But it is definitely, uh, we are definitely looking at kids who are, are targeted group that need that extra support in reading and math. And, um, that's kind of where we're gearing our, our, our curriculum towards as well. So it may not fit for everyone. Um, if it's not, doesn't, you know, fit that kind of, uh, you know, the, you know, the, you know, that, that group, I guess.
We started with a invite list, uh, looking at students and their a- assessment scores from winter, so February, that is for us. Um, and we, um, identified students who fell in that high-risk category in reading and math. This is both K-five. Uh, we also looked at students who have been in a distance learning setting because we wanted to invite them back in and build tho- that, um, back into school experience as well as different friendships and things like that, getting back into that sort of school schedule. Um, and then we just finished assessments, um, here in the spring or we're currently in them. But we looked at the data that we ha- currently have and we definitely identified the, the right students in our first round of invitations. We, um, invited, I think it was twenty from each grade level. We sent out email reminders asking them to commit or decline, which was fine and we understand that this is not the right fit for some families. We s- we made personal phone calls to all those families. We sent out another twenty invitations and are doing the same, email reminders, personal phone calls, uh, that sort of thing. And we just worked today, and again, Mr. Holberg, um, this is taking quite a bit of time, but we just identified another round of, or a third round of, or group of students. Uh, we wanna make sure again, um, that we have these identified students, um, who again have been receiving some sort of intervention, have been identified as at risk in reading and math, or maybe didn't grow this, during the school year like we had hoped they would. Um, so hoping that we don't have a typical summer regression, um, that we typically do in the summer. We hope to be able to maintain and we sure hope that we'll even be able to grow in some of those skills as well.
Do you have a target or a cap per grade?
Right now, uh, we have, our, our cap, I guess, is thirty students. We're really targeting, um, right now we're looking at anywhere from twenty-four is our goal to thirty students. And that will be staffed with two certified teachers and two support staff. So that's our, our working goal right now. And again, working really hard to get the right students, um, invited and committed.
This might be more of a district-wide question, but in some of our early conversations about summer school and enhancing a program and making it this robust, was the concern of teacher burnout and not getting educators and support staff time out of the building? Di- did we have any breakthroughs with that? Or are we gonna staff this through our own district teachers? Are we reaching out elsewhere?
Yeah, it's a, a wonderful combination and we most certainly respect the fact that there, this is not something that our, some of our current staff are interested in and we respect and support that because this has been a very trying year and, um, people are tired. Uh, but we did have quite a few staff, over half of our staff did sign up, um, and express interest. Um, and so we were thankful for those, as well as we reached outside of our school dif- district. And I, we, I think we have maybe, I don't know, five or six, something like that. Um, certified teachers as well as support staff, um, who are, will be new employees to the district. Is that the right number about that?
Yes.
So we're thankful for their interest as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Becky, can you answer a more, uh, technical question for me, detailed perhaps? Uh, do we know what summer school will cost per student? If we had an a- a cap of thirty, we managed to fill thirty spots for K through five?
Yeah, so when we originally planned the budget, um, we weren't sure what our staffing could look like. We weren't sure what the labor pools would be. Um, and so we actually planned the budget for an amount greater than what we currently are going to need. And so then later in the presentation, I was gonna talk about how some of the S R three needs that we've been discussing in the buildings and administrative lay might actually, you know, be moved into that S R two funding. Because we had originally said S R two funding is gonna help with H, HVAC, P P E, COVID coordination, because it'll be a little while until five-year-olds and up are vaccinated and then also prioritize summer school. And so we will have an administrative and a board-level community decision to make about how much, you know, once we see the final enrollment, then we'll make sure the staffing is as, um, Ann described, so that we have the two, two, two teachers and two paras per gr- you know, cohort of kids. But then if there's dollars left over from that preliminary budget, then we'll decide, do we need to earmark that for next year's summer school? Or are there other district needs and student needs that we may not even have identified yet? Because we don't know what the students are gonna come, all of the students are gonna come back within the fall. So this is gonna be really fluid as we learn and hear from all of our administrators about what they're experiencing, what they're seeing in their registration, um, what kind of needs there are, when there's IP or five oh four meetings. And so then we can continually revise what this is gonna look like. Hopefully that helps. And I don't have a, a per-student number, but our original projection was that one year, one summer school would be six hundred and twenty-five thousand total. And then I could certainly send you that workbook. I don't have it in front of me, but like you could see the preliminary budget line item amounts.
I have a comment, um, it might turn into a question, but I think the free busing is huge. It reminds me of when we started free breakfast and then started free lunch. It's like, it's huge. And then, um, I th- will you be able to keep track of like regression and, and how they tested in the spring? And then students that go to summer school and how they test. And then I'm hoping too, that no matter what happens, that it's not just a one-year, let's just try it this year and, and it works kind of. But let's keep it going because we can learn from this year and improve it next year.
Absolutely. We, um, do have solid data at the end of the year. So this spring year on where students are, we'll have a continual learning plan in each of the students who attend Summer Bridge. So it will have that incoming data as well as, um, ending program data. So we'll have some specific data points that we'll look at and track students with the hope of that they maintain and hopefully grow even in their learning.
And we are not planning for a one-year summer school program. We're really looking at a two- or a three-year program. That would be similar to what we're doing now, based on what we learn.
I would just like to interject on the transportation piece of it. Um, this is a, an opportunity that's been made available with S R funds. This is something we've never been able to afford in the past. Moving forward, that's gonna have to be a question for the board and the administrative team. If transportation is important, that will have to be funded from some other, other source. So we, we, we took that opportunity to use those funds to try to get those kids in there that we need to, that we need to see.
This might be a question for Lynn, but, um, are there S R funds available for activities? Right, like could that extend into that world?
So, so throughout all these conversations, we've had, um, many conversations to see how our community programs can help and benefit the students as well. So I know we have a meeting on Thursday morning, um, with the teachers and the activity coordinators for the program. And we will see how we can supplement and, um, enhance those programs as well.
So it is possible to use S R funds to contract Park and Rec community education programming?
Like an activity bus of sorts.
Correct.
And the S R funds, they are also, it's an allowable use of them to cover food service costs as well. So there'll be food service, labor hours also accounted for in that larger budget for summer programs.
I think, uh, Dan and Ann, Dan and Ann spoke very well to the, um, enhanced summer school program and the targeted services dollar. This is just reflecting that, that split again from Park and Tiger Elementary, so. And they've done an amazing job, like they s- they said, uh, with Mike McDowell and Heather Viancor taking on coordinator positions and doing that on top of their teaching and then meeting and coordinating all this and inviting the students. It's, uh, it's gonna be a wonderful, amazing program this summer and thanks to all of your, your work, um, to get it rolling and inviting the, the students in.
We did schedule, uh. We did schedule in a ten-minute break. Would you like to use the full amount? Okay, I'm seeing guesses.
I just have to go to the bathroom. Is that break now? Is it coming up soon, Becky? Oh, okay.
Ann, did you have anything additional on targeted services for us?
I think I just wanted to add that during the school year, West Elementary's K-one targeted services program is also before. Uh, typically we, we have better luck before school than after school, so that's how our program has one, run. And we look forward to continuing that for next year. There's an increase in the, uh, request, uh, due to the hope of adding even, uh, maybe an additional day during the school year, uh, so. And then we also run a summer program. And so the new enhanced summer school program will help support, uh, the West kiddos as well for targeted services.
There it is.
So shall we meet back at seven-thirty?
Yes, we'll take a ten-minute break and be back here at seven-thirty.
I think Knutson has some healthy snacks to share.
Oh, huh.
My biggest question was.
Yes, it is seven thirty. Take away your M and Ms. Okay, we're ready to proceed.
Okay, I'll go ahead with nursing, and the operations budget for nursing is not going to be increased at all on next year. And this budget has stayed pretty consistent over the past few years. Obviously, this past year, we've had S R funds that we've used for additional supplies that we've needed. But the day-to-day budget will not be increased. And then in special education, we will see an increase in the special education due to increase in transportation costs at about nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. We'll also see an increase in private nursing, which will be increased by about four thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars. And then also our PAC for Family Contract, which we use for a social worker at the middle school and high school, will increase about one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. And then also our reporting software that we use, sped forms, will also increase by about two thousand, five hundred dollars. We are able to reduce costs in two areas. One area that we're reducing by about ten thousand dollars is the Instruction, Technology and Equipment and Curriculum Fund. And we can do that because we have, we're at our third year of implementation of our STAR program, so our professional development costs have decreased. And then also we have about a three thousand dollar reduction in the building rental for the TAP building. So overall, we have an increase of about fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. And then the personnel reduction is at the middle school in an E B D position that was working with our cornerstone program. And the reason why we have that decrease is because of the group home M T P that has closed. So we do not have the increase, we do not have the same number of students that we were servicing previously through M T P. We just have the hutch house, so that only impacts our high school at this time, so we will continue with the cornerstone program at the high school. Any questions for special education?
Are special ed students part of the summer school plan? Or is special ed a different summer school?
Yes, we have special education extended school year, which is part of a student's I E P plan. So if they qualify, whether they show regression or recruit, recruitment concerns throughout the school year, and also if they have self-sufficiency concerns. So students that have more intellectual disabilities may need to convert life skills, job skills, all of those kind of areas. So they do participate in our extended school year, which is separate from the K five school year. However, it is not ruled out that special education students, if they, if they fall into one of those categories, can, can also attend the K five summer school program as well.
I would really recommend and push that because I think it would be really good for special ed students to be with regular students like they are during the school year and doing some of the fun.
Yeah, thankfully, we have it all at the middle school, so they'll be around their peers. And, you know, hopefully there'll be some interaction there.
The budget for curriculum instruction and assessment has a slight decrease, and this is based on, on student enrollment. That's where these dollars are generated. And bigger pieces of this budget fund our workshop week back-to-school salaries. This is curriculum writing time, professional development that teachers submit to attend a workshop or conference. This also funds our assessments in terms of our FAST assessment, which we use K five. That's diagnostic and benchmarking, our STAR assessments that we use six, eight, and reading and math. And same thing for the FAST tests, those are reading and math, and some behavior pieces. So that is the large portion of where this, where the money goes for, for this budget. So this summer, for example, there's a number of teachers who are, even though they had a very trying year and, and, and are coming together this summer to do some curriculum writing. There's lots of the elementary grade levels are. And middle school, high school, to begin together again as a P L C team and work on some of the things that they put on pause for a lengthy period of time here over the course of a year, and seeing that, that work is important, and put in curriculum writing time applications to put that together. So I thank all of them for, for doing that and, and coming right back at it here this summer to get ready for the fall. So that's where a lot of this, where these dollars go, directly back to professional development, to the teachers and our staff. In terms of the level, is there any questions about that? And then in terms of the Level Two requests, there is a recommended reduction of, and I'll explain this a little further, one F T E music teacher, which is at the elementary level, and add a one F T E art teacher that will go to, to Park Elementary. So as we're reconfiguring our, our K five buildings and, and programming, that is what is recommended. With that, and just to clarify this, that right now we have an elementary teacher that is teaching halftime music, halftime keyboarding. We are going to reappropriate that keyboarding time to the four-five classroom as more of a enrichment piece, and that music teacher will then be full-time music. So when I talk about a one F T E music reduction, we're not reducing music programming at the K five level. So that will cover some of that music time. So with that keyboarding shift, then that'll allow that music teacher to devote a full-time to, to music. What this will do is reappropriate some time at the middle school. Right now, a choir teacher is teaching choir and has devoted time within the middle school schedule to be having time for small group lessons, voice lessons, has been in the schedule for some time. And that will not exist in the schedule under this proposal, and allot that time then for that teacher to be teaching at the middle school for choir and then reappropriating that time to elementary music.
Is that the loss of another win teacher then?
Does that teacher? Yes, right, yeah, so the choir and band time is during that win time, so that would not affect that, that time. Right, and that teacher, that teacher would not have a academic home room. Any questions on that Level Two request or the budget? Okay, title programming, there are four pieces of title. Title one is, is our intervention programming, reading and math, and like I had spoken to earlier, that is based on our free reduced counts as a total district. So K twelve free reduced numbers, then that then is appropriated to where we designate where we're going to have Title One programming. We have head Title One programming, our K five building, and cornerstone programming. There are some rules and regulations that, that you need to follow, that districts need to follow in terms of a larger school population. For example, if you have a school that has a seventy-five percent free reduced population, you must service that school. And that is, our cornerstone programming does have that, and that's why that is, is designated that. Our K five for the rest of the schools, then you can go in a rank order of where your free reduced populations might be higher or lower. So that's Title One, and we'll continue that as long as there isn't any changes in what we find out in the application process this summer in our K five programming. Title Two is typically either used for professional development or a class size reduction. In the past, we have looked at where we can use those dollars for class size reduction. Title Three is E L L services, and then Title Four is something that was new a couple of years ago, where that money is used for well-rounded education or technology or health and wellness. And so in the past, when we started that, we used that for some new programming. When we talked about our restorative practices, six, twelve, that fell under the health and wellness pieces. When we talk about well-rounded education, we use that for some of our C N A courses at the high school and to support those, those new programming. So we also used it for some summer school programming, K five, and the, the first application to offer some more distance learning pieces for students that didn't come every single day. And that was even before the, the pandemic to keep some of those students connected with, with school. So we'll have to rewrite these applications again this summer and send that in for approval to M D E this, this fall.
Mike, would a gifted and talented program fit under like a Title Four, or is that not?
It, it, it's, it's a different set of dollars, but it can be for when you talk about well-rounded education, if there's something that you wanted to, to start for after school or during school, or you could use that money just as long as you weren't supplanting, meaning you can't spend it on something that you would already have spent dollars on and reappropriate that money. And then Add Says, Alternative Delivery, Specialized Instructional Services, we've had this for a number of years in all four of our buildings. And this is really dollars that we send in for, in an application to service students before they get qualifying for special education. It's supposed to be, excuse me, a program to try to intervene before students would get into, to special education. So at, at the K one building right now, we have behavior reading support, and at Park Elementary, reading behavior support, at middle school, reading, math and behavior, and at the high school, behavior support. And that's, and the, the dollar increases is really when it comes to personnel salary. And we did complete the application this spring, and last week, we did find out from the Department of Education that we were awarded another two-year application for next year and the following year. It's a two-year application process. It's a two-year application process.
And Mike, this is just the district's portion of the cost. The total program costs about one point two million.
Right, so what we, what we've supply, what we support is, is half of what we get back from the application in terms of financial support.
Runs through the special education formula like Karen Lefal's area. So we input the staff salaries and the supplies that are spent. And then the state runs that through its system and then sends back fifty, fifty-five cents on the dollar, depending on the year. So the next three are, a couple that I oversee, the district-wide budget, the budget that the school resource officers in Perkins, United Way Grant, Pact for Families membership. We're just revising the budget down a couple hundred dollars to reflect actual amounts that we've been informed of in order to continue those instruct, in subscriptions. And then on the next slide, under fixed costs, when you think of fixed costs in the school district, think of the audits that we pay for, our phones, our Apple Track software, how we have people apply for careers, jobs, positions, the accounting software. We also pay for some of the premiums through here for the flex accounts. So think of those sorts of fixed costs that we need in order to do business. This amount is going up by six thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. I do recommend that because we have higher retiree insurance costs and unemployment costs relative to the prior year. And we will be able to levy for that, and that was a part of that levy certification process that we did together in December. But when we factor then in that revenue, those other subscriptions are increasing. Those inflationary costs are associated with some of those other products. And so that then accounts for that overage relative to the prior year. Then in district office, this is our, our paper, our markers, folders, it's our PD budget. And any sort of materials that we need to do our work in district office. I'm not recommending any overall change, but I have moved dollar amounts amongst various line items just because our spending patterns have changed quite a bit in the last couple of years. And so I'm trying to find a balance between where we were at in twenty nineteen and where we've been this year and try to kind of walk down the middle of that, that difference for the current year. And then I'll revise once I see what our, our new year looks like for spend rates. And then we'll turn it over to Brian.
Good evening, once again, this building, or this budget item is planned to operation. So think of this as everything it takes to operate the school building. So all the utilities are out of here, water and sewer, custodial supplies, minor repair supplies, the contract with the, the city of Hutchinson for snow and grass removal. So about seventy-eight percent of this is fixed costs, so those utilities that we don't have any really discretion on it, we get the bill, we have to pay the bill. You'll see that there's a level three request on here to the tune of sixty-five thousand six hundred dollars. And that's for the anticipated costs of what it will take to operate Tiger Elementary School. I did my best I could to look at some of the trends, some of our averages that we have in our newer buildings to try to extrapolate what those costs will be at Tiger Elementary School. The following year, if things track the way they, the way I'm anticipating, this can be decreased slightly because we'll be taking off that footprint in Park Elementary School. Next year, we'll be operating everything because we will not have removed that portion of the building. Are there any questions to this budget item?
Would the Park Elementary operations decrease if we're maybe getting more energy efficient in that remodel? Like that offsets?
It, it should, but one of the things, individual components become more energy efficient, but expectations grow up, go up exponentially. The, the, the high school is a prime example. Our natural gas costs, costs are significantly lower than what they used to be because it's not a sprawling old building. But the expectation is, is now that we cool it every day out of the year, or I shouldn't say every day, but when there's a cooling need. So we're cooling that in the summertime, whereas the old high school had very little cooling. The same thing will be said to Park Elementary School, that will have a chiller plant in it that'll have to be run during the, during the cooling season. So electrical costs go up, natural gas, you know, costs come down. But overall, we've reduced those costs significantly over the years. But I'm just not willing to bet on that quite yet.
I thought Dan Olberg, Olberg would be clapping when you said that it was gonna be cool.
One of, one of the interesting things with Park, though, part, I wouldn't say it's because of low expectations, but that building has been extremely cheap to heat. And the reason is because it's a three-story building. And now we're seeing that with, with the high school, with that same trend. And we'll see that with Tiger Elementary School with those two, two floors stacked on top of each other.
That just rever, it reverses when it's really hot, you know, as a pity.
It won't in the future, Dan. Transportation, we are anticipating a slight increase. We're in a, we're in a negotiation year right now, so part of that is projecting what those transportation costs may be. The reason it's not larger than what it's shown up here is we are projecting the decrease of one bus for both the elementary and the secondary routes. With the declining enrollment that we're seeing, we're, that's what we're anticipating, that's what we're targeting at this point. We're working through a process right now, and it's a little bit of a chicken in the egg. Last year, we asked our parents to, to defer transportation to try to help with COVID spacing. So now we have to ask them again, do your, does your student need a ride? So we're working through that right now. The other thing that it impacts is it impacts the bell times in our buildings. If you think about it, we still have to cover the same geography and we, we do it with more, with fewer buses, it takes more time. So we're working through that right now, and hopefully if everything works out okay, we won't have to change bell times. This, the impact could be as little as the elementary school starting and ending five minutes later with the secondary ones going a five minutes earlier, just to give us a ten-minute spread in between. But we're still working through that. So I've been working with the Hutchinson Bus Lines to start preliminary route planning because that impacts all of their student handbooks and all of that that needs to go to press later in the summer. So there's a lot of moving pieces to this potential reduction of one route. Any questions on transportation? The last one is long-term facilities maintenance. So this is categorical aid that's not in the operating budget, it's actually a capital budget. And we receive about fifty cents on the dollar from local tax levy and state aid in this one. This budget item came out about four years ago, and we're in about our fourth year in this. And this money can only be used for restoring the buildings back to their original condition. And why I say that is we can't do any additions, you can't do any upgrades. It's basically just bringing it back to what it would have been like new. So the bulk of the expenses for next year are projected, actually to supplement the construction budget. The big items will be replacing or repairing the roof at Park Elementary School, foundation waterproofing at Park Elementary School, and then the HVAC and electrical upgrades, it'll be done there. And then at West Elementary School, we're also replacing the chiller. We'd actually projected to do that a year from now, but with all the other work that's going on right, that, right now, we've added that to the contract out there, paying for it out of these funds, but the contractors out there will be doing that. So we took advantage of them already being at site for that and moved that up one fiscal year. This one here also, before I, before I hand the mic over, is a little bit of a strange duck in that we will not get our instructions from the Department of Ed until about the second week of June. And then the school board has to act on that by the end of July, and I don't want to throw another meeting in there for you folks. So between the middle of June and that July board meeting, we'll be putting all these numbers together on that. The revenue is also dependent on enrollment, and then there's a complex formula on the age and square footage of your building. So this revenue fluctuates from year to year a little bit, and we won't know that until that budget guidelines come out in, in June.
And this is the proposed technology operations budget. Technology, this pays for the services, many different services such as the internet, printers, different software that we use. Some of the changes for this year, we're spreading out a few things for covering Tiger Elementary, a few different categories. And as far as the operational reduction, we took some money out of repairs. I just noticed that we hadn't always spent that entire budget the last year or so. And then supplies we reduced and some of our staff development. So those are the areas we reduced that by five thousand.
So for food service, our operations are slightly a little less than the previous year. But we are also looking for a level three request to support that extra serving area at Tiger Elementary. Our farm-to-school program is expanding, so that's gonna require more labor. And we are also starting a school gardens, so that will help pay for supplies and then buying of the produce there as well.
And the increase, we, we voted last month to raise the price of meals ten cents, I think. And that will, that doesn't offset this at all, that's just other things?
I should also say that more than likely we'll have free meals again continuing next year. They just haven't given us guidance on how that's gonna go about.
So then the incremental revenue that she's referencing is the increase in the à la carte prices, so the purchasable items that students can elect outside of the main meal being served. That would be where those additional revenue dollars would then be, you know, spent on the additional labor needed for that serving line and then these new program expansions.
This one is your budget. This is your budget, and I manage this on your behalf. You'll see that this budget number has not changed. I did make some minor adjustments to it, and I'll explain those in a second. So this budget covers the board salaries, it, it covers professional development, our association fees, MSBA, Schools for Equity and Education. It also covers employee appreciation programs and recognition. And then it also covers our legal services and any consultants we may have. So in the past, I did make one adjustment. In the past, we hadn't always spent all the legal service dollars or the consultation dollars. So I did shift some of those dollars into board salaries to cover the increase of the board salary this year. This is a budget that we'll have to take another look at next year to make sure that this amount is appropriate. But for this year, I feel comfortable being able to stay under this budget for this next fiscal year. I would take any questions that you have on this budget?
I just wanted to clarify, you said staff recognition, that's our ability to fund events for the staff, correct?
Correct, yes. We usually do a, a breakfast to start the year. This would help support the Teacher of the Year program. We've got a picnic coming up soon at the end of the year, and we use some of the dollars to support that as well. Other questions? Thank you.
Okay, so I introduced the operating capital funding stream at the beginning of the presentation. And so this is where I was talking about how we had over a million dollars in requests. We met as an administrative team to prioritize and then funnel that down into the six hundred and forty thousand dollars that shows up in your budget book. And so then you can see, you know, in the various columns, how much we spent last year in technology, how much we anticipate to spend of this revenue stream in the upcoming school year. We have that same information for curriculum. And we have also added in some spend down. So we'll be taking from our checking account again this coming year for one-time items or items that have long useful lives. We will be putting in playgrounds, as you know, at West and Tiger Elementary. We'll also be working on furniture and equipment for the new buildings and the new spaces. And so that's why the capital facility line, every year out of this funding stream, we set aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those needs just because the long, long-term facility maintenance and general fund, our needs far exceed what's available in those streams. So then on top of that two hundred and fifty thousand, we've set aside one point two five million associated with these one-time intermittent type of purchases that we have associated with the new building. So then relative to last year, our operating capital expenditures will be one point eight million, down from two point one million. This is the recommended amount. So at this point in the presentation, you've heard from all of the administrators and all of the budget managers. And as you can see here in line item fashion, the positions that were described to you as a part of the reduction staffing plan by building, and then it totals up at the bottom to also include the transportation routing changes, technology changes, and then a potential funding stream reassignment for our chemical health position. This went to print, this particular part of the presentation went to print right at the same time that we were having programmatic meetings regarding the REACH program. And so we'll continue to have the chemical health supports. It's just a matter of how that final job description looks and then how the new hire, what sort of qualifications and background that person has. And then then we'll be able to decide how much of that should be charged to general fund versus S R three funds potentially. So like other areas in the budget, this is still fluid. And in the upcoming weeks, when we finish our hiring, we'll be able to firm some of this up. Any questions on this? Okay, so then I, I want to make sure that we touch on the stimulus funds. I will go a little bit quick just because we did go over these very same slides during the COVID and budget forum. But like I mentioned before, we currently have six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars set aside for the first summer school program. And it looks with what we know right now that the total program costs will come in slightly under that. So then we can reserve those dollars for future summers. But as mentioned during the forum, we will be deploying these resources on the COVID coordination needs that we may have this fall. PPE and cleaning, sanitizing, some of those new habits will continue into the future. And then we do have HVAC filtration upgrades at West that are factored into this budget. Any potential improvements in the middle school, that would likely be a part of S R three, depending on how that total budget is planned. And then there's various equipment purchases that we've also factored in here. And then as we move forward, S R three dollars, we spent quite a bit of time talking about this. And it's, every day that goes by, we get a little bit more information about how we can potentially use the money. And the money is more wide open than what we knew last time we talked. And so the Department of Ed published a frequently asked questions, which gives us more information about how those dollars can be used. And so we know from COVID leadership meetings that our staff has recommendations, our administrative team continues to meet. And then on the next slide, acknowledging that we have to set aside twenty percent of this for learning loss for addressing that, that's approximately four hundred and fifty thousand. We have a current plan to spend these dollars in the following way. With mental and chemical health supports, personalized learning, additional PD supports in those areas. We do have a decline in enrollment this year. However, we do have an increase in both of our special education department and our EL department. Not only do we have an increased number of students needing services, but the intensity of services is also greater. Therefore, we do recommend using these stimulus funds in order to build up supports in that area. Student behaviors, especially in the early grade levels, it, you know, very well is spread throughout in various grade levels. But for sure, we've had a lot of students who delayed preschool, maybe weren't going through assessments they should have gone through at certain points in their life. And then some may have had a very different kindergarten experience than they would have had pre-COVID. So we also have built-in supports for our staff and our students with respect to student behavior. Interventions is something that we will continue to discuss as an administrative team as well. And then some of the more typical COVID pieces, that until we have all of our students vaccinated or at least hit saturation there at a reasonable level, we'll continue to have some of those COVID materials, purchasables, coordination type of costs. Hopefully, the months won't tick away where we keep, keep doing that, but we will keep everybody safe. And then we'll revisit how mu, how much needs to be set aside for those reasons too, just as the guidance and the amount of vaccines are available to people. We don't anticipate executive orders at this time. However, what we've learned in the last 18 months, I just even hesitate to say that. So we'll just continue watching what the executive branch and the legislature does and keep everybody posted. As we work administratively, we don't have any administrative meetings set between now and the end of the school year. But in June, we'll resume our planning sessions so that we can fine tune how we want to best utilize these funds. Also know, we'll know by that time a little bit more about the summer school registration, summer bridge program registration. And then we'll also start to see how registrations are tracking over the summer. Some of these stimulus plans though, may be very fluid throughout the fall and winter once we have our students back and see what needs there are. And then we can react at that time. That's part of the purpose of those funds as well. So in order to sum all of this up, we always acknowledge enrollment and the formula allowance being the key drivers of our revenue budget. Once we establish that revenue budget, that's our framework for building our staffing plants and our expense budget. When we take a look at the fund balance slide, the first orange column shows the information that I presented on the current year revised budget during the April board meeting. And then what I've done is I've aggregated all of the information and the plans, attached the cost to it, and then identified what the revenues and expenses are for each of the funds that we have to designate within our accounting ledger. So the state tells us you have to keep the general fund separate from food service, from community ed. So that's why I've projected on a per fund basis. As you can see then in that second orange column, that's a projected balance of where I would see with what I know today, which there could be a lot of changes, but with what I know today, that's where I think our checking account is likely to land one year from now, June 30th, 2020, 2022. So that's, that's a long ways out, especially with how quickly things are changing. But again, with our assumptions that we have, this does not include the stimulus funds. I just want to be very clear about that. It does include the recommended reductions. But I wanted to be able to demonstrate and had a lot of conversations with my counterparts in other districts about what would be a best practice for this because we've never walked through this before. And the consensus was is to show what the core operations look like excluding the stimulus funds, because that's really our true financial picture. And so I wanted to show that excluding the operating capital spend down, we're projecting a deficit then of $700,000. Fortunately then, as we move into this next year, and if the students don't return at a rate of 50% or more, we know that we will need to use a stopgap of stimulus funds for that estimated amount for what I know today. So it's a combination approach to balance the budget for the next school year. It's the staffing for enrollment that we've discussed, but then it's also applying stimulus funds. So it's a combination approach to moving towards a balanced budget. Then shifting gears to food service, we anticipate $60,000 in spend down. So we will have incremental revenue from raising à la carte prices. But we take those prices up gradually over time. However, those additional labor costs will be larger in that first year as we get the new serving lines up and going and some of these new programs going. And then we hope there's some convergence over time with the revenues and expenses. And we'll continue to monitor, monitor that and then revise where we're going to set à la carte prices in future years. And if we have free meals, if those programs stick around after COVID recovery or if we revert back to a paid meal type of program. With respect to community education, we anticipate 40,000 in spend down. It's approximately 11,000 in the core piece of community education, so all of Lynn Newman's area. And then 20,000 is in ECFE with respect to those investments that we plan to make into the furniture and equipment. And then the balance is kind of spread out amongst the school readiness and other programs. The project account, we do anticipate spending that down. The latest cash flow report I received from our project manager indicated $21,000 will be pulled out of that bond checking account that we currently have and then paid to contractors. And we'll keep updating that over.
21 million, right?
21, yes, thank you.
Yes, you said 21,000. I knew it was way more than that.
21 million. Yep, we need to add some zeros. Thank you, Darren. And so we'll continue to work on our budgets, but with what I know today and the assumptions that I've shared with you this evening, this is my best estimate of where we could potentially land a year from now. And so I think with that, I'll pause for questions and then also our administrators will be available. Again, as I mentioned, some of the rest of the slides are more housekeeping. There'll be several weeks now for review and questions and discussion. So feel free to call or email any of us. And then when we come back together in June, that's when we'll actually, you know, take the formal board action to get the budget in place, the starting place for our spending pattern, so that we meet the statute requirement of July 1. So with that, what can we?
Could I ask one clarifying question on the S R three funds?
Sure.
You had said that 20% needs to be spent on learning loss.
Yep.
Is that minimum amount? Like, could we spend 40% on learning loss or do they set it at 20%?
We have to set aside 20%.
At least.
At least, but then after that, it's up to local discretion about what we want to prioritize. And so we'll work administratively this summer to determine what that looks like for us here in Hutchinson. You know, the summer bridge, summer school program we'll have in there, the HVAC filtration, the EL supports, the behavior supports. Those have been identified already. And then we'll also consider what do those interventions need to look like for our students in order to help them recover from all of the pandemic interruptions.
And at this time, it looks like S R three, we're going to get three fiscal years to spend those to be able to maintain some of these programs, to really get through the entire recovery program. I don't know if we've got any defined answers on that, but it sounds like three fiscal years.
Three fiscal years, but technically how it's written right now, this is one of them. But we don't even have the ability yet to see our, our allocation that we can build a budget on. We have estimates and those dollars aren't even loaded out there so that we can apply for them. So it's written for the three years. However, really in practice, you know, for practical purposes, it'll be two for sure. But I know there's a lot of push with the legislature at the state level to have them push on the federal government to potentially extend that out.
Can you go back to the actual budgeting Excel? So Becky, I want to make sure I understand you correctly. You said on this slide, you are not including any COVID relief funds.
I am not. I am not in the 2022 school year. Because we don't have those items approved by the Minnesota Department of Education. Therefore, I can't even draw those money, that, those funds at this time. And that's not a district decision. That's the application timeline at the state level. However, I do want to point out that with respect to fiscal year 2021, that does include the million dollars in coronavirus relief funds as well as the $230,000 in S R one funds. Those funds were used to stopgap and fill in where that revenue shortfall was from the loss of students. So for the current year, those budgets have been approved and expended and expenses charged there. So those are reflected in there.
So in the 2022 projected revenue, you're not including any COVID revenue?
No, because I want to show the effect of all of our assumptions and current programs and what the associated costs are in a, in our regular operating environment, excluding those funds. Simply because I can't draw them yet and because I want us to know too collectively how much we really should set aside should this enrollment loss, you know, our, our revenue budget, the 33.13 million, that includes 50% of students returning. So this projected deficit spend of 713,000, it could be more than that or it could be less than that. If 75% return, that number goes down. If 25% return instead of the 50% to 65% that we factored in, then, you know, that number deteriorates rather quickly. And so I want to be able to talk through that and show that.
So my reason for that question is a follow-up question.
Sure.
In the 2022 expenses project, projection, are you including in that expenses projection any of the items that would be paid for by COVID relief funds?
No, that would, that would not be a good way to do accounting. We would be overstating one and understating the other. Nor would I want to indicate that we could afford to pay for those things if I don't have approval or the ability to draw on the revenue side. So both sides of the equation would be added in at the same exact time.
Okay.
That's a little trickier too because it's one-time money.
Yes.
Just making sure I'm reading this correctly.
Of course. Yep. That's a good question.
Can I, can I go back and just make a clarifying comment that I missed on my bullets? But on my operating slide with the level three request of 65,600, I failed to mention where that actual money is coming from. So many, many years ago, we were attempting a bond referendum and an operating levy at the same time. At about that same time, there were several districts in the, in the state that built new buildings and didn't have the money to operate them. So one of the pledges we made to the taxpayer when we went out for that operating levy was to set aside money for future operations of a building. We failed at the bond, but we passed the operating levy. So the district has a reserve account currently that's sitting at $600,000 that was set aside for the future operations. So that 65,500 will come out of that account. So it would be easy to look at, you know, 65,600, that's one, one loss of a staff member. That's not the case. So you can't, you know, so it's a totally different pot of money that's funding that one.
And Becky, you said on this chart that we're looking at, this includes a reduction of almost 700,000.
Yes, it does.
So without any reductions, that balance is actually seven point something million and a deficit spending of.
Correct, because instead of decreasing by 713,000, we'd be decreasing our budget by 1.4 million.
Right.
Maybe this is a little too philosophical, but so we talk about the cuts at K1, 2, and 4. And we talk about how with, with some students coming back or new students, we're going to keep an eye on that and possibly add back. So what about the middle school and the high school? At what point do we, because there's middle school and high school students that will be coming back as well. But we don't, because they're, you know, not class, not classroom specific that.
So I think, I think add backs in that area may look a little different. It may, it may be driven based on what the student needs are and if there's any concentration in a certain grade level. And then we would deploy the S R funds based on what those students' needs are versus saying, you know, if we have 185 kindergarten students, then we'll add a section to that grade level. That discussion just looks a little different at the middle school and the high school. But they definitely wouldn't be excluded from that conversation as far as what that looks like when we get to that point, if we get to that point. Hope we get to that point.
Do we know when MCA scores come?
Usually, Mike probably can speak to that. Usually we have embargo data in July and then we have public data at the end of August.
Yep, so the, we won't be able to publicly speak on the data until the end of August and talk about that. We can talk about it internally. We have that preliminary data now that we automatically get when the students are completed. So I know where we're at and some of the principals do, they were able to look at the scores. But we can't openly talk, speak to those in a, in a public meeting or anything at this point. We can use it internally though for instructional purposes.
So in a, in a theoretical sense, if we knew there was a grade level really suffering in math and we were cutting a math program, could theoretically S R dollars fund a math FTE for a year as part of COVID recovery?
Sure.
Adding theoretical?
Yep, could.
That would be allowable. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, and speaking to, to your question too, and Becky spoke to this as well with the middle school, high school pieces. It's a little different when students are, when the students do come back. I guess at the high school level, they're, if they're coming back, they're having multiple areas where they may be able to be taking classes and it might not increase as, as quickly, if that's the right way to explain it, as if they're, if a whole six kids join a certain grade level, well, they're all going to be in that certain grade level at the elementary school. If 10 kids come back at the high school, those 10 may or may not, as we're talking about some of the reduction, for example, that Rob spoke to, may not be in a math class. Half of them might be in a math class. They might be some students that already met their credit requirements. At the middle school, however, if, if six or seven or eight or 10 students do come back at a grade level, that would be more attuned to an elementary type scenario though.
Questions?
Yes, thank you. I'll ask a big one. What if maybe 95% of the budget proposals are agreeable to me personally? And so what if we had agreements with part of it? Like, how do we get, when's the discussion for that? Is that now? Is that at the next meeting? Is that like just internally throughout the next month or so?
I would encourage you to give us a heads up now if there's a concern, but definitely would want to have an offline conversation to try to understand all of the moving pieces to that. And then we would also want to pull in the right administrator and unit manager to make sure that we're not overlooking any of the ripples, because I know that word was brought up before. Because we've really worked hard as an entire district team to put together a package that would minimize those ripples. And so we would want to, you know, take that feedback and then consider it with everybody here so that we don't miss something that we need to make sure that we consider.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we would talk about that feedback administratively and we would come back with an updated recommendation at the June meeting or maybe not. But then ultimately, the budget adoption decision is the board's on June 14th.
Okay.
Is there anything we should have a heads up on or would you like to talk?
I, well, yeah, I don't know if I'm ready to ask the question without sounding maybe
Okay.
like a jerk, so I. No, here's, okay, so I will speak freely. I, I worry a little bit that so much of our, and I, so this is going to come out sounding wrong, but I'm going to just go for it, be vulnerable here. I worry that so much of our COVID relief money is being spent on a really small population of our students. And so this is the parent in me speaking out that I worry that maybe some of the needs of my kids aren't being met, right? And so maybe one of the ways that's being met is me personally, that they have a smaller math class. So that's just, yeah, I, I want to make sure it's equitable for all of our students, even though there's some that need it more and most, so I support that. I just, I'm hoping that we're talking about everybody.
Sure, sure. Yep, we will take that under advisement, consider it, talk about it. And, you know, my, my initial reaction is, is we're, administratively, we've talked a lot about the opportunity gap and trying to close that in. And so that's been a priority for us, no matter what funding stream we're talking about. And so with the onset of the S R stimulus funds, we looked at that as a way to deploy resources and try to align with that larger administrative team and district division to try to close that gap and catch kids up so that they can sustain. Because, you know, they weren't anticipating all of this, just like we weren't. And so that's my initial reaction.
Yeah, and I don't not support that, right? So I just, I'm.
Understand, yeah.
Yeah.
If I can, I'll add a concern in a different direction that we have historical precedent for looking at our minimum target maximum class sizes. But those are precedents set during a non-COVID time where we have not been faced with these challenges in putting our students in a place where they've oftentimes fallen behind. And I don't necessarily want to be beholden to those class size historical precedents in a year where we've got a lot of ground to catch up on. So the, for instance, is, you know, some of these classes creeping into the mid to high 30s or mid 30s in particular subject areas is sort of scary to me. classes creeping into the mid to high thirties or mid thirties, um, in particular subject areas is sort of scary to me. Um, I, I've been in some of those classrooms and I'm not even sure how they would fit that many desks in there. Um, much less teach all those kids and, um, get them caught up. So I just, I, I guess I don't wanna, want us to be so stuck on a number in a time where we're trying to recovery, cover loss.
Absolutely, we can take that under advisement. I'd be curious, you know, another offline probing conversation to try to get to the root of some of those comments, just to determine which classrooms we're referencing. And then also, um, just to visit a little bit more about the fact that the administrative team has met and we look at those class size targets annually. And so we did consider what's going on in the state of the world and this year and any given year. And also too, what they are as of the day that we calculated them and then referenced them tonight. They're probably different today, they're probably gonna be different tomorrow. And so as we move into the summer, then we can get closer to the first day of school and we'll have more families either committed or not. And then we can rerun those numbers and see, run a self-check. Okay, you know, with what we were thinking back in April and May, is that really the, the best thing to do with what we know today? And so that's why this is gonna continue to be very fluid over the course of the summer, more than ever before. I don't, Darren, do you have any other?
Uh, can I just, uh, just for clarification, I, when we talked about average class sizes in some departments, you know, at the high school, we were talking about a math average class size of twenty-seven point one-two, and I think middle school was a twenty-eight point. I, Brenda or Becky had that number. So I just wanna clarify, I don't, I don't think we heard anything that was proposing an average class size in the thirties.
Not with the data that I have so far, however, when we pulled this data and shared it, the date on the memo was April fifteenth. And so based on how many families we've had confirm registrations, that number certainly can be updated. Um, I would recommend spending time right now though on the S R two budget because that's due June first, so we need to make sure that we get those pieces in. And then I would recommend after the start of summer school revisiting what the registrations are indicating and then, you know, talk collectively to determine what then a hiring pattern could look like. But that hiring pattern, it may speed up, it may slow down throughout the month of July and beginning of August.
I apologize if I misheard or misunderstood. I guess I wanted to clarify that I, the bigger point is that I don't wanna be so set on a number that we've used in the past when we're clearly in a different place than we were when we were using those numbers. So, we understand.
Well, a concern I have and just something I would challenge maybe administrators and directors to look at, and I just saw this as a common theme tonight. We're talking about several years of declining enrollment. We're proposing seven hundred thousand dollars in cuts to our staff. Um, hundred and ninety students last year over year, even if eighty-five come back or ninety come back. I saw a lot of business units requesting the same exact operating budget as years passed, and I'm just not sure how that's, I, I, I'm not seeing how that makes sense. I mean, at some point, yeah, it's minute, it might be a few students here or there in each grade level, but with seven hundred thousand dollars in reductions, we've gotta be using less paper, using less staplers, using less pens. And I know those are, those are small dollars, but they're dollars.
They are, and one thing to.
Same exact dollar for dollar year over year, that's just hard for me to comprehend.
Sure. Yep, that's noted. And then, um, to take a historical look at it, um, as a part of prior reductions, supplies all across the district have been reduced by ten percent, but administratively, we've talked about that and we've gone back and forth. Uh, we really have supply budgets already that are at a, a bare, you know, they're at a minimum point. You know, if we were to go any lower, we may not be able to meet the needs that we have available. And we really don't wanna get into a position where employees feel as though they need to self-fund things that they want to try to accomplish for students. And so, um, we do not, we, we do not not consider that. Um, and so I just wanna make sure I point that out as my initial response.
And I'm gonna kinda dovetail in with that as being the longest tenured person to sit in the same seat. I have seen twenty-two years of this. And as Becky alluded to is, we've been faced with budget cuts many times in that twenty-two years that I've been here. And what we've done is we've consistently sharpened that pencil on those supply accounts because we are a human business. And we wanna do everything we can do to protect those people that are in the classroom delivering those services. For example, you know, my operating budget looks pretty big. It's smaller than it was eighteen years ago. And that's difficult to do when utility prices, water prices and, and custodial supplies continually go up. And the rest of the directors and administrators are faced with the same things. The supply costs don't come down. But we've been asked consistently over the years to sharpen our pencil on those budgets. So they may look consistent on what was happened last year, but if you looked at the historical trend is they're significantly lower than they have been in the past. So you, so that's when you look at it year to year, yes, as you said, Mr. Massman, and they are consistent and they're relatively small dollar amounts. But it's, there's not a lot of meat left on those bones anymore to look at.
Yeah, I was gonna say that was the low hanging fruit years ago.
Yeah.
I think my, my challenge would be, uh, we're dangerously low with very little meat on the bones with teacher staffing as well. And so when we're looking at reductions to teachers, I think there's some wiggle room in some expenses. Cause I've had a lot of teachers reach out about how they're worried about getting into twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty students, but I haven't had one reach out and say they'd hate to have to buy their own pencils.
Could I ask a tough question about, um, the staff at Central Office? Um, does anybody audit, who audits that, right? Like, has Central Office been asked for personnel reduction there? Or, right, I know that enrollment doesn't change, um, payrolls, right? Like this payroll specialist still has to do payroll, so I'm just, if you could maybe speak publicly on that.
One, chapter twenty of Twenty Thousand Leagues Under the Sea, An Underwater Tour of the World by Jules Verne. This LibriVox recording is in the public domain, recorded by Michelle Frye, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Chapter twenty, The Tories' Strait. During the night of December twenty-seven, twenty-eight, the Nautilus left the waterways of Vena Coro behind with extraordinary.
And so really on an annual basis, like all of our administrators do, we take a look at what do we have, what do we need? And then we build our budget up from there. Um, we do have staff that have been running since the last budget reduction cycle at a reduced number of days. Um, and I don't have a recommendation at this time to, to necessarily change that, but I did reevaluate that and look at that and discuss with the pertinent parties in this room, um, with respect to, does a change make sense in that area? Can we help be a part of the solution? Um, but we also need to continue to run operations at a very high quality level too. Um, so I think that's my initial response, but then we can certainly follow up and talk more.
It feels to me a little bit like a perfect storm that, uh, you know, we've asked our teachers and administrators, everyone in the school to work unusually hard and in strange new ways now during this whole time. And so it's really easy to understand how it might hurt in a building when someone you've been working next to, possibly even a brand new teacher right out of college has now lost their job.
Understand.
So, yeah, we, we have to talk about numbers and, and dollars, but it's, it's the people decision that is really difficult.
Absolutely. Part of my role is to present the numbers and I hope that on any given night I do it justice with showing that empathy and that compassion. Um, I'm an accountant by trade, so I, I, I do hope that comes through.
No, it's not a criticism of you, it's more of an explanation of why we're getting all the phone calls, all the email messages, um, having all these conversations.
Yep, understand.
Well, thank you to everybody in this room for working so hard on a really complicated plan. Cause it is people, right? Thank you. Any more questions? Any more comments?
Just one comment, I guess, that I would encourage board members, if you have questions or concerns, to do that sooner rather than later. Um, you know, I think Brent alluded to the ripple effect of this. I mean, this is incredibly complex interconnected plan and it's not easy to just pull at one string and, and still have it all stay together. So well before our June board meeting, I would encourage you to, you know, yeah, answer whatever questions, uh, concerns. Make sure that, uh, you know, you get that to your satisfaction. So hopefully, I think the, the, the plan would be to have this finalized to vote and approve by that meeting, so, so don't wait.
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
On the favor, say aye. I suppose, you know, meeting adjourned. Thank you.